Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is the town of New Canaan Town Council regular meeting. It's Wednesday, July 20th, 2022. It's 7:04 PM. If you're not able to join in person, you can join us. We have a Zoom link on the town website. Just click into the main page and join us through Zoom and we'll let you in. It's also, this meeting is also broadcast on channel 79. That's correct, right? We should be up on 79. Are we up on 79? Yes, we are up on 79. Good, good, good. So Tucker Murphy isn't here tonight, so we're definitely down some of our technology here. So bear with us. All right, we're going to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all rise and face the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Penny, will you call the roll?
Robin Bates-Mason.
Here.
Rita Batino.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Mark Jemsky.
Here.
Steve Curl.
Here.
Luke Hoffman.
Luke is actually coaching a nine-year-old New Canaan baseball team tonight. They moved into the next championship round. So that's where Luke is tonight. NC9s.
Mike Morrow.
Mike's joining us, I think by Zoom. He may be joining later, but he's got a trial. He's in.
Ryan Auton.
Here.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Hillary Orman.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Christina, I think Christina has joined us as well, but.
Not here quite yet. I don't know when they are. Anyone here? We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. We have a farm.
Thank you, Penny. Moving on, I have number two minutes, approval of minutes for the regular meeting held on June 15th, 2022, and special meetings held on June 23rd and 29th. We can go through these one at a time. June 15th, any deletions, corrections, additions? None noted. How about June 23rd, deletions, additions, corrections? Anyone? None noted. Great. And then June 29th, any deletions, corrections? Okay, and then finally, our public hearing was on June 29th as well. So we had, it looks like four sets altogether. So any other corrections, deletions? Lots of minutes. Lots of work. Thank you very much. All right, seeing none, we need a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Second.
Second.
Kim, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Public comments are next. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the town council on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address. Comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to total number of speakers. Would anybody like to address the council this evening? As you can come on up, I think we have a live mic. This, this mic here is probably the best.
Good afternoon, everyone.
How are you?
My name's Justin Nishioke. I'm a Squires Lane resident. Speaking here today because I wanted to provide a few ways this town council could help make the wireless infrastructure better for our town. A petition has been floating around. I'm not sure if any of you have seen it or signed it, but there's a couple petitions going around against these large macro cell towers that the first selectmen has been advancing. Hundreds of residents have signed these. I think at this point for both petitions, we might even be up to 1,000 signatures. So there's a ground swell of community opposition to these towers. Now, the, the main reason I want to speak to this body was just because of this body's ability to pass ordinances. Of course, you have the authority to pass certain ordinances to, for instance, with our own town-owned property. So my hope was that this body could at least look into something like some kind of prohibition or restriction against cell installations within 1,500 square feet or 1,500 feet of our schools for town-owned property specifically. I think, you know, ordinances have been used quite a bit recently by various towns to address cell towers. I, I know that West Cog, I'm not sure if many of you are familiar with it, but I'm sure that you are, has provided incredible resources online, and I encourage everyone from this body to certainly look at those. The University of Connecticut has posted some of them on their website. And in those materials, they provided several ordinances that have been drafted by Connecticut municipalities like our own that have helped shape the, shape their policies to what their community desires are. And so my hope was certainly that you can look at those, but more than anything, again, as I said before, I was hoping that this body can look into an ordinance that would restrict cell tower installers, at least macro large cell tower installations on town-owned property within a certain distance of our schools. And again, you know, I, I'm here by myself, but of course, my, my wife and kids, I'm, I'm here on their behalf as well, as well as the hundreds of other residents that have signed these petitions. And similarly, we hope that this body could take action as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you spell your last name, please?
It's N-I-S-H-I-O-K-A.
O-K-A. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the council?
My name is Janaye Hunter. I live at 70 Bennington Place, New Canaan. I have three children in the New Canaan Public School System. Um, I feel like I'm having deja vu. I don't know how many of you all were here in 2017. I know Tom Butterworth was. I know Penny was. I know some of you. You were as well, Steve. We went through this before. It was very emotional. It was very heated. What first selectman has done, which I would have to add, despite having told some of us during the election, he was, thought it was a dumb idea to place one of these behind West School. He has, again, reintroduced this idea, now saying, but it's going to be farther behind the school. But now the tower is twice as tall as the prior suggestion was. It is now 135 feet tall by the time you put the appendages that Homeland Towers is drafted. If anyone's over at West School, the water tower behind West School is 65 feet tall. It's above the tree level. 135 feet is going to be twice the height of the tree behind West School. You know, farther behind West School is also a bit of a misnomer, pushing it farther back because they're going to have to clear out hundreds of trees back there to do it. So it's going to be plainly visible from his playground. You are still going to have to access it through the playground. They say there's an access road. The access road was built, it's not wide, and it was to go to the leaching fields. It meanders through and they've used it once every three years. It is not a regularly used road. So that is going to have to be widened, is going to have to, and you have to access it by crossing the playground at West School. I was at West School this week, next to where you'd have to go through, or where they put up plate, picnic tables, and they've got outdoor classroom setup. Those would have to be removed. We also have the security issues of we're going to have workers coming to adjust and work, not just build it. I don't know how long that takes, right behind West School, but we have workers coming and going. I've done research to build these cell towers. They're not permanently there. You have to readjust the antennas accordingly. So workers are going to be coming and going, having to adjust the antennas all through West School parking lot and playground. It's not the parking lot, it's the playground. It's literally right where the kids are. There's no road access to the option A on the diagram. I also think that we discussed in 2017, having an ordinance, as Justin just mentioned, of trying, and I asked for an ordinance that we would not put them within 1,000 feet of our elementary schools, the public elementary schools on town land. Many towns have done this. Communities such as Vale, Colorado, has done this. Communities such, there's a list of them. I can provide them. A great number of communities have done that. The Board of Education in Palo Alto forbid them being within 1,000 feet of their elementary school. I think people in Palo Alto know something about technology. The countries of Switzerland have, say they campaigned by daycares at elementary schools. This is not some tinfoil crazy conspiracy thing of, this is not a good idea to put them behind an elementary school. And I just want this town body to do it. You all have the power to stop this from moving forward if it gets past the first selectman, which I'm still hopeful it won't. But if it gets past the selectman meeting, you all will have this power to decide. One easy way to do it, but just pass an ordinance and saying, we revisited this before 2017 when I wasn't here. But apparently it was brought up then, it was shot down. It was brought up in 2017. It is now going to happen after Labor Day with the West School families are back again. Can we just say we're not going to do this behind the public elementary schools in this town? That is what I would request of this body.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, anyone else? Come on up.
My name is Jane Ravret, and I'll spell it for you because everybody needs the spelling. It's R-A-V-E-R-E-T. And I live at 331 Danes Highway. I'm really here because I've lived in a lot of towns like this where we have beautiful schools and homes and people feel safe, and they came from other places where they didn't have that kind of bucolic setting. And that's why they're moving here. And I have seen my neighbors who have these really sweet little kids. He's so distressed about what's happened here. My kids didn't have to go through that. I don't know how many of you have older kids, but why should these kids have to worry about that? And why should their parents? We can help them. And I've lived in these other towns, and when there is an issue about children and about teachers and about the things that really matter to this town, we can help them. I know we can. I know that there's research that is outdated. I know that there are other options in our neighborhood. For example, there's somebody who has offered his property, which is one of the highest properties in New Canaan, and he's done some research on it, and he can put an antenna up in our neighborhood and cover a great deal, even more than the cell tower that's going in on Ponus Road, which would then go across the reservoir, and most of the signal goes across the reservoir. And so I'm just asking, I've lived in California, I've lived in Switzerland, I've lived in some of these other places where they've really thought about this carefully, and I understand that there's been a lot of work done on this. But I also would say that a lot of the work that's been done isn't impacting the people that are in the schools right now. They weren't here 10 years ago. They have small children. They're concerned about this. We should address those concerns. This should not be something that happens in the darkness of COVID, which our tower did, or in the middle of the summer, over July 4th, where nobody knows what's going on. And I think that's the thing that concerns me most, is we are in a privileged community. We can treat each other with civility and with kindness, and we can make sure that this is a transparent situation. In our situation, we also have a private LLC that has bought the property. Our understanding is that the woman who sold it believed that that was going to go to the land trust. She didn't want a cell tower on her property, and she was basically, as we understand it, duped into selling the property. And now her neighbors are just, you know, up in arms because they have this looming tower over, you know, we had the property next door to us where the Bushmans live. I don't know if they're here tonight, but they're probably listening. They have four kids. It was empty forever because of, you know, the recession. And now finally, we have four kids. They're all playing on the playground in their backyard. You know, they've got the soccer nets set up. It's a beautiful, wonderful thing to hear those voices in our community, and that cell tower will loom above them. So I, I really hope that you will band together and do what you can in a community like this to make sure that parents are informed, that their questions are answered, that we are thoughtful and considerate about what other alternatives there are. If there are other alternatives in San Francisco, my sister lives in a suburb there, they don't have these giant towers. So there have to be alternatives, and I hope you will consider them.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? And there's nobody, is there anybody online?
Nobody has their hand raised.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Number four, first selectman update. Kevin, you've got the floor.
There's someone.
Oh, there's someone. Do you see somebody, James? People raising their electric.
Yeah, sometimes they're. There seems like someone at the bottom of there it goes. Yeah.
People raising their hands.
On Zoom. Someone needs to talk.
They don't know how to raise their hands.
Go into chat.
They need to.
I think.
We got unmuted.
Go into chat and tell them.
Go into chat.
And there's a hand there.
There we go. There you are. You're alive. We can hear you.
Hello. Hello. Thank you. I was trying to start my video too, but I, I can't. But my name is Myden. I live at 113 Bennington Place, and my older daughter goes to West. She's a rising third grader, and my younger daughter, Willby, she's at the Rainbow Station. And my family moved to New Canaan last July. It was just a year now. And we came here because I have young kids that I want to raise in a great town with great schools. And I live within walking distance of West. And so, yes, this tower is a big deal to my family personally, but all the West family, you like, all the West families and the teachers and the staff. So I really do hope that you consider this ordinance because it would make such a difference in my peace of mind as a mom, and also I, it would be looming in my backyard. So I just wanted to add my voice, and I spoke at a recent Board of Selectmen meeting as well. My neighbors told me about this, ones that fought this in 2017. New ones like me who have young kids, and you know, please listen to your community. I registered to vote when I came. I want to be part of this community in solving problems and, you know, this is my home too. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, any other hands raised out there? That was it. Okay, great. Thank you.
No one in the chat.
Okay, thank you. All right, Kevin, you're up.
Good evening, town council. Good to see you all in person. As I always start with COVID, as you know, or should know, that our health department has moved temporarily to Irwin House for about three or four weeks while Van Cottage is being painted, and they are offering still three, three days a week of testing and rapid tests as they did in Vine Cottage, and also boosters and vaccination clinics, and especially the under five-year-olds, six months to five-year-olds. So that's all going on in the health department. There's obviously a bit of an uptick in the new variant, but it doesn't appear that people, the governor points to the fact that there's hospitalizations that are not rising. So people who are boosted and vaxxed, they generally don't get very ill, and, but COVID is certainly not gone away. We'll see whether August brings any different picture for us, but that's where we are in COVID. Capital projects, you can't miss the capital projects around town. It's great to have a lot of roads under restoration. Obviously, the state is doing 123 at night, and, but you see what's going on on Elm Street, Grove Street, and Pine Street with the installation of the gas pipeline. We're very happy to have that going forward. They're also going to do Forestry, and then they're going to go into Lapham Center from Old Stanford Road, and also, as I may have mentioned before, they're going to go to Wabony House, which surprised us as well as the paddle courts and the pool. So this is the last stage of our resource gas expansion. Unfortunately, the purer told resource to shut down one year early their expansion plans. So people have until August 9th, I think it is, to sign a contract. Otherwise, they will pay more. So people who are looking, especially the businesses on Grove and Elm and Pine and Forest Street, we're encouraging them all to sign contracts to get under the wire. So that's what's happening with ever source gas expansion. Aquarian is in the middle of Elm Street with the water main. You'll see it there this weekend with the sidewalk sale. It's unfortunate timing, but, you know, we've lived through the Aquarian Water Main replacement on Main and Owen Oak and, you know, they're 100-year-old pipes, so they have to be replaced. And then finally, CHP is now operating in this building, making electricity as we speak. And we are unfortunately, CHP has not turned down its sacks yet for reasons that I don't quite understand, but it's been installed and it's, you know, hopefully will get resolved soon. So that's on Capitol Projects. Be happy to answer questions. 220 Elm, I had a meeting this afternoon with the superintendent and the co-owner of 220 Elm. Gridiron Capital has moved out to their new building on Pine Street, and they will end their lease at the end of July with both the town and the other co-owner. The superintendent is working on his plan for renovating. I think we're going to push his move date from March to June because the police will not be ready to take 39 Locust, which the owner of 39 Locust has agreed to lease to the town for two years while the police department is rebuilt. And I'd like to sign that contract by the end of another two weeks if we are moving forward with the police department plan with 39 Locust. I think, I don't need to say anything about the, well, the LOI, you know, was signed with Cinema Lab, and we love the contract for the interior architectural work. The exterior architectural work is underway, so we're excited that that plan is moving forward. See. Oh, the Silver Hill Hospital Urgent Assessment Program started last Monday, and we're very excited that they've had like six or seven appointments made already, and we had an intro meeting yesterday with our contact points in town to spread the word as to how this program will work. There is a website, the Silver Hill has on their website about the program. Be happy to answer questions about that. That's very exciting to get that going. The, as I, let's see, now two weeks ago, Russ Kind started as our permanent EMD. There's an emergency management director. And I look forward to Russ making New Canaan one of the safest towns in America, let alone Connecticut. It's really, really exciting to have him onboard full-time. Last week, we had a meeting with Frontier. They surprised us, although some residents may already know it because they received letters. The Frontier is wiring New Canaan this fall with fiber to replace their coaxial system. And they did it to Wilton last year, ended with them last year. This will give competition to Optimum LT's because they're going to have 100 gigabyte upload and download, which is far superior to what Optimum offers. LT's wired the town, but you can't get LT's unless you ask for it, or you move. Kind of strange marketing strategy, but but anyway, it's exciting because having a, having a powerful, and you can get higher than, than 100 gigs, 100. What is it? You can get, get one gigabyte up and down. You can get two gigabyte for more money, but it's $59.99. So it's very exciting to have a new competitor, a serious competitor. Frontier was operating the old Uber system where they had but that was all copper to the house. This is fiber to the house. So it's, you know, this is a very exciting development all over town. And of course, they don't even issue a press release, but, but we, about 33 residents or neighbors of 33 nodes have received letters that boxes are going to be installed near their home. It's not unlike the existing U-verse boxes that are around town for 45% of the town. They can be elevated above the street level or the, if, if they need to be. So if people have questions about that, they may have received letters in the mail as the town has, because we're close to one of the boxes. And then finally, the moratorium application is completed, and the town attorney has issued their certification letter, so we are moving forward with the 830G moratorium application. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions for the council, Tom?
Well, what happened to the, I, I was under the understanding that we couldn't get the moratorium extended until we finished the, the project at Lakeview, but that's.
That was then. Now is now.
I like it. We're moving in the right direction.
I think we, we have clarity with the Department of Housing. That's not to say everyone will agree with us, but the important party is the Department of Housing.
Go for it.
Great news. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
Question, Rita?
I have questions about the roads, which are near and dear to my heart. First of all, I'm ecstatic that Tiger is doing all this great stuff at the highway department and getting all the roads paved. It's wonderful. Having said that.
COVID delayed the process, unfortunately.
Yeah, I know. I mean, it's, it's an unfortunate situation, and I, I mean, it's understandable. I think that, I mean, there have been, I think, concerns and complaints about maybe how we're doing it because of there's, there's no indication of detours on where maybe to go around. I think people are, I know people have gotten flat tires, and so I'm just wondering if maybe there's a way to soften the blow for folks that are driving around town.
Well, Public Works sends out, they actually put things on, people's door knockers. And then when the, you know, notifying them, I think it happened in your neighborhood, everybody gets notified when they're coming and they're told.
We didn't, but they knew because.
Tiger tells me that, Tiger tells me that happens.
Well, Tiger knew that I was telling them, so that's why he did it.
Oh, no, but they, they do it. I mean, they, actually, we're trying to make it electronic, so people get emails.
He got anything on our door knockers, but that's not the, but the point we were.
To Tiger. Tiger tells me it happens.
We're happy. We're happy. We were really happy with what happened in our neighborhood, and I think.
They're beautiful.
They're beautiful. And, and the sidewalks going on, thank you. I mean, on Farm, I think are fantastic. I think people are so excited about that. So I am not, I don't mean to be ungrateful at all. I think this is wonderful that we're.
I'm not criticizing Tiger.
I never, I love Tiger. I love Tiger. I think, I guess I'm making maybe a.
So yeah, I think, I think part of, part of it is communication, and some of the, some of what you're asking for, you can direct people to the town website. There's some information there. But the best source, I think, is the DBW has a Twitter account, and they're daily out, they, they post daily where they.
Actually, Tiger does that. Tiger on vacation this week, but the reality of Tiger's shop does a great job.
Respond to people who have been complaining, because like I said, I am grateful, and I think people, everyone's grateful that the town is getting these roads paid.
If you're out there complaining about 123, because there's spots on 123 where you can break a tire.
Well, actually, and that's, but that's not, that's the state.
That's the state.
State, and I think that's a whole nother thing, because it's very odd with the way they're doing that, to be honest, and that's a whole nother thing. But no, I know that's not us. I guess my only, my only question is, is there a way to, like, let people know a little bit more? Because when you're coming into town, you're not getting a door, anything on your door, and people aren't following Twitter. I'm just suggesting there might be a way to soften the blow with some folks and let people know that they can go around town.
Could I ask you to speak to Tiger when he's back on Monday? I think he has a good.
So.
Oh, Tiger, you're on the call.
Hey, Tiger, I love.
Tiger's on vacation.
I love you, Tiger.
I haven't gotten one complaint, so you gotta, you have to help me out. So I haven't heard of anybody popping a tire other than people on 123, which is not our road.
Yeah, this is actually in town, but you know what? Who should I, maybe I should direct them?
To me, as always, you know.
Back to you. Okay. And I don't mean to, you know.
No, it's fine. You know, we, to Kevin's point or to Steve's point, I tweet out every morning or at night where we're going to be. That gets picked up by the New Canaanite and by the advertiser, and it gets posted on the town website. We sign everything. I've got police officers working at every single job where we're working, unless they're on a cul-de-sac or a side road, a cul-de-sac or a side road, similar to what you did for me. I had the exact same situation. I'm breaking off more Murlockwood. We're at three residents helping me out, telling everyone what's going on. You know, the, I don't know. Tell people.
Tiger, you're breaking up.
Yeah, and we don't have to pull, I can, I could take this offline maybe and just talk to you directly about some of the folks. And again, I, I want to, I want to re, I want to emphasize how grateful actually the town is that this is happening, so I don't want that to get lost.
I would also mention, I've been working for two years to install a system where we can communicate with residents by road with emails. Right. We're getting very close to finalizing that, so that, that would allow more effective communication with each residents of each road that are being affected.
I think that'd be really helpful. Great. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. We have them. All right, moving on. Item number five, appointments.
But before you, I didn't want to not address the West Tower, because I, you know, I've sent you emails. But before you get, I do, I, I, I didn't want to not address the West Tower, because I, you know, I've sent you um emails, you folks have, the new the new members um need to get up to speed where we've been in the past five, six, seven years. Bill Walbert is here tonight, former chairman of the town council, I worked closely with Bill and John Angle um, on the, on the plan that was the town adopted, wasn't my plan, I hundred percent support it, only towers is doing what we asked them to do. Um, so September, we will have this conversation, it's a very important discussion for the town. And um, it's about, you know, now that I don't want to answer questions tonight, it wasn't on the agenda. And uh, there's, you know, you guys need to do your homework, so.
Yeah, you sent us a link uh to a couple of meetings in the past, um, so hopefully those who are new will watch those meetings and get up to speed as far as, you know, the meetings we had in seventeen, some of the meetings and discussions that were done at the Board of Selectmen and, and um I specifically remember under, you know, Rob Malazey's administration, which prior to yours, you know, we, we had long meetings about this, so.
In my four years on the town council, I think I attended every utilities commission meeting along with Stan England. So we, we followed the process throughout, we um, town council kind of urged them to do what they did. I sent you that resolution, it was passed by the town council, so anyway, um, we got a fulsome conversation coming, coming up in September.
Yeah, and I think it's smart, as, as some of the residents have indicated tonight, we want to make sure everybody gets a chance to weigh in on this, you can't do this in July, right?
If there was a new technology, believe me, we'd be after it.
Good.
I have a question. Hi, I actually attended some of the meetings in two thousand seventeen when there was a, a cell tower being proposed at the transfer station. So even though I'm new, I know a little bit about it and I read a lot of the data that you sent us. Are there any coverage maps that are updated? Because I noticed a lot of the information looks like it's from two thousand seventeen, which is you know, five years ago, is there any updated information about coverage in the, the areas of town that it, where there are cell towers?
The maps that are in the two thousand seventeen report that I sent to you, right?
Yeah.
The northeast has been partially salvaged by Richie Cell Tower, the northwest had been partially salvaged by the proposed towers before the sitting council, eighteen thirty seven Ponus Ridge. I'm working, I have a meeting tomorrow night with the country club, for three years I've been working with the country club to advertise into that tower, they're going to replace that tower on the, on the one twenty three. And um, but unlike wine, coverage doesn't get better with time unless you install infrastructure.
But with the new towers, I would think it's changed.
Well, in those areas, in those areas of town, right? Uh, read the report, the west side of town, the east side of town and the center of town are where we need to solve additional coverage areas.
Right, but if like North Stanford installed the tower, that could cover the west side of town, so that's what I'm just saying, could we get updated information on coverage? Because I know that different towns like North Stanford is talking about
September, for September, I'll, I'll
Can I just finish?
And give you
I just
You need September.
North Stanford is saying that our tower at, on Ponus would cover North Stanford and they already rejected their tower because they didn't want a tower.
No, 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 it was never a tell cell tower. They rejected our public safety antenna, eighty feet tall, public safety antenna, Stuart Saravini is here tonight, Stuart, Stuart, you know, they, they wouldn't allow on the reservoir's own property at the foot of the reservoir, right? The Stanford P and Z turned down our public safety tower. It was in Stanford. Yeah.
No health issues with public safety.
Yeah, right, but there, okay, my basic point is, is could we get updated coverage maps from Homeland or whatever the company is that's doing it? Because I feel like facing information that's really affecting people's lives on, on information from two thousand seventeen is not fair.
It's not, it's not the point. When Homeland Towers goes to the sitting council for proposed tower, they have to prove to the Saudis and they have all the propagation maps at that time. So no, no tower can proceed without current provable propagation maps, so that, 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 that all gets done in due course. But as far as the need, you know, the need has not changed since Bill Walbert and I worked on it five years ago.
So can we see those maps as Mike, that's where I started.
Sure.
Who generates, who generates the maps, Homeland or, or?
The tower, the carriers generate their own maps, the sitting council will, will do an aggregate map if we ask them for it, but again, you, you know, the, the need is not, is not in question as far as the need in the area.
It's, it's good though, I mean, the point is, we should be looking at fresh data, so it's, you know.
And by the way, one bar is not cell service. Seriously.
I really need to
And, and the other thing is, when you talk about coverage is one issue, but capacity is there too. The reason, the reason, um, I think Verizon now has installed seven microcells in town to give for the capacity downtown. Uh, AT&amp;T takes a different approach, um, they've been more proactive than Verizon. This tower on the west side of town is funded by Verizon, so um you know, there's a lot for you folks to get up to speed on where we've been in the past, I've been seven, eight, nine years working on this.
May I ask a question?
Just real quick, if you're, if somebody asserts that there's great coverage in their neighborhood and you doubt that, get in your car, turn on your cell phone and you'll see one bar.
There's an app on, on your phone where you can see exactly how many bars, how many, whatever the, it's called, decibels, uh, and whi, which tower you're getting. You can look at it, so there's, there's no, there's no guessing, this is all scientific.
No, I understand that, I just think that, you know, I have looked at the information and I definitely plan to look it over in detail, but I think that to base you know, information on data that's from two thousand seventeen is not a good basis for going forward, that's my only, you know, issue. One of my only issues.
Yeah, but Kim, unless tower, unless infrastructure has been installed, there's still that gap, it doesn't, nothing has changed that, so you know, no tower is installed in the west, no tower is installed in the east, no tower, tower has been installed in the center of town. Those gaps, those gaps still exist, you, you, you know, the uh, cell signals don't come out of nowhere.
Wouldn't people have a microcell or whatever on their house or, 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 you know, what if that?
Kim, do your homework, you got a lot of reading to do.
No, I, I do, I, I do, do plan to do my homework, Kevin, but I, again, I'm going to reiterate that we need more current data, because I think that cell towers in other towns can affect our coverage, whether it's North Stanford, I don't know, I don't have the data in other towns.
I would love it if, if
Pound Ridge, other places.
Pound Ridge, when I started this seven years ago, right, the law didn't allow the Pound Ridge antenna to shine into Connecticut, they changed that to some extent, so some people up on Cross Ridge Road and places where they say, I'm now getting a signal. Right, they, they, they're not getting some service from the Pound Ridge, but cell signals do not go more than two miles. So you can't make a tower two mi, three miles away give you service. So
I understand that.
All right, guys, it's twenty, maybe we got one more question, Hillary, you're going to wrap it up?
Yes, I'm going to wrap it up, that's my specialty, um, so Kevin, I totally appreciate all the hard work you've done on this, I know it's been a monumental task. I think for September, one thing that would be helpful for me at least, is like Kim said, I want to make sure that we are getting the most high-tech technology installed. Um, secondly, I would
Most high-tech is five G and we're not getting five G in the century, so.
Well, let's figure it out, and I would like to know why we can't get it and what's going on with that, but secondly, there's a game show aspect to this reveal of where we're going to have towers that is a little bit off-putting to people, me and to other citizens, where it's like, in two weeks, I'm going to reveal that there's another one going up on the east side and we need one in the center of town. And it feels like this is not happening transparently. And so, in September, it would be nice to hear there's going to be one, we, this is the plan, one at Ponus, one at West School, one on the east side here at this location, one in the center of town. I think it needs to be a plan presented to us about, this is where we're going to have cell coverage in this town, this is the plan for five years.
Yeah.
Eight years.
That's the plan, the challenge adopted in two thousand nineteen seventeen. Those sixteen, August of two thousand sixteen, right, they, they, we commissioned Homeland to go out and do this for us, that's what they've been doing.
Okay, well, you, but you told us two weeks ago, we're going to hear in a couple of weeks that there's going to be an east side reveal and I haven't heard it yet, but I don't like waiting, like with breath that is baited about where the next location is going to be and we have to sign a lease in two weeks and oh my God, it's urgent. It would be nice to hear a plan about the town, I don't think that's too much to ask in September for Homeland to come back to us, because it's coming at us piecemeal and it's like we're swatting it flies with this, and I just think it's not too much to ask for like a cell plan in town, so we can decide if this makes sense.
Yeah.
I don't doubt that it will, but it would be nice
Lady Gaga will come in September. You know, they've been working for us for, since August of two thousand nineteen, to August, two thousand sixteen, so.
Good.
Steve, I know you wanted to say, I really have one quick ad that, that follows what, what um
Last comment.
And it's really quick, in addition to what, this is, in addition to what Hillary was saying, it'd be also great to have, um, I, I, I have actually a friend who does emissions testing for cell towers and he just mentioned that what would be helpful also is to, whatever cell towers that exists, if there are um emissions um, testing results, that can be provided for what's existing and what is proposed, so that would be another ask. It's, it's actually supposed to be on public record, but I'm not sure with the private individual it is, so we just want to make sure that that's provided.
The um, when each tower goes up to the FCC procedures for measuring, that is a part of the, you know, the deciding council process.
Great, but it just, it's forthcoming with everything else, that'd be lovely.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all that, Kevin, that's a lot in one sitting, appreciate it. Number five, appointments, approval of the following appointments, Board of Finance, uh, appointment of Maria Wine Garden as regular member term ending November fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, uh, I don't see Maria here. Or is Maria online? It's not like we don't know Maria, but uh we're going to do all of these at once, I think.
Or do you want to do them individually?
Individually.
We'll do them individually, okay, so uh, would anybody like to speak on behalf of Maria?
I would like to speak about the nomination, if I could.
Sure.
Um, I'm a little bit loath to do this, but I think that this is a really important board um of ours and a very important seat. And um, I didn't bring this up when she came up for an alternate, to renew her alternate seat, um, because she was an alternate, but now that it's for a full seat, I think it's important to make these points. Um, first, uh it, it worries me that she's had to recuse herself already on an important issue that's come before the board uh as a, on the sewer issue. Um, she's had to recuse herself because I think either she worked for Mr. Karp or because she's been so vocal about the housing issues and affordable housing, um, I respect her advocacy. Um, I think we're both activists and I don't use that pejoratively, I'm very proud of that. Um, but because of that, she's had to recuse herself on a really important issue that's, that's fomenting in our town, and so I think elevating her to a full-time position where she will have to recuse herself from issues that are percolating now is, um, causes me some concern, um. And second, um, I'm not entirely clear what her qualifications are, I know she's an incredibly talented chef. I know she was in real estate, again, she worked for Mr. Karp. Um, I know she ran Mr. Monahan's campaign for first selectman quite well, um, but again, this is we have a huge budget in this town, I'm not quite sure what her financial background is, um, and what qualifies her to take this very important position. Uh, third, and perhaps most importantly, uh, she has proven to be a highly partisan member of the RTC. And we're asking, we're being asked to approve uh for a very important, highly visible board. Um, that's supposed to be impartial, and again, while I applaud her advocacy and her activism, I don't think that it has any place here, um. And, you know. Finally, I, and again, I, I regret having to bring this up, but seeing her smear two parent volunteers from West Elementary during the campaign last summer, uh, one of whom both of whom are, are, are friends, but it doesn't matter, um, online and in public for the purposes of an election, I just thought exercised incredibly poor judgment. And I don't think that someone who would do that deserves a place on this board. Um, further, she she speaks quite often at the Board of Ed, she's put her thumb on the scale um, on issues that would affect their budget, including open choice and other things. And perhaps she would have to recuse herself from deciding BOE issues, that's the largest portion of our budget. And again, I don't blame her for being partisan and I don't blame her for having an opinion on these issues, I think it's amazing and I love her voice and I've learned a lot from her and we've partnered on many issues. Um, I just don't know that it's appropriate for her to then serve on this board as a result of those things. Um, and again, her um treatment of other parent volunteers who had no involvement in the election, I just thought was really distasteful to have done that online and in public, and I would feel remiss in not mentioning that uh here, so for that reason, I do, cannot support her appointment to the Board of Ed.
Okay, thank you, Hillary.
Oh, the Board of Finance, sorry, Board of Finance, sorry, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Maria?
I would say I, I totally support Maria, Maria's appointment. Um, we have definitely had our differences on a lot of different issues and I respect her knowledge base, her background, her position. A lot of us have strong opinions and sometimes they come out on social media and um you know, I don't think that's always a reason to have to recuse yourself, I mean, we represent people, so of course we're going to have different opinions. Um, and, and she has been part of the budget process, she's been vocal, she, I mean, I can't think of a better person um, that I'd like to support than Maria for this position.
Christina, thank you, Maria.
Um, I've known Maria for many years and she's a very thoughtful and caring individual, she does have a finance background, an undergraduate degree in that. And
She worked for a waterhouse.
Yes, I would, thank you. And I think that uh, the fact that she recused herself is not a negative but a positive in understanding that if there is any reason why there would be the perception of a conflict of interest, she has taken the high road, so I wouldn't discount her for that. And I think that she has been present at the meetings and she has been, even as an alternate, responsible in carrying out her duties, so I would support her.
Thank you, Christina. Anyone else? On the way in? All right, um, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's, um I wish Maria was here, because you know, it's, it's a lot easier to talk to someone when they're in the room, but um, you know, I've known Maria for a long time as well and and she's a strong person, I mean, she's a strong individual and she will tell you exactly what she's thinking, as, as all of us will, we're all, I think we, we have a twenty thousand type A personalities in this town.
She, she, she has signed on.
Oh, is she? Okay, okay, good, so you know, I'll let her speak for a minute, but um, you know, when it comes to some of this stuff, you know, it all, all I know is that I've preached civility uh here twenty-four seven and and that's really what, what it comes down to, we all have to remember, we're all one town and we're all working together. And you know, when someone raises their hand to volunteer their time for this community and, and Maria has done that and she's put a lot of time into the community um, and, and worked for this town for a long time, you know, I I, I definitely err on the side of support just because of that and um, and you know, I applaud Hillary's, you know, she's being brave stepping up here and, and as she always does, and she's, you know, just saying it like it is, so, you know, and, and her opinion, so, um, but if Maria, Maria, are you out there?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Okay, good. Yeah, we're hi, we're about to um uh, sentence you to another couple of years on the I'm glad you were able to join us, so.
Yes, I, I would like to explain that I did recuse myself um from the decision of the WPC, uh, Public Works, because um, there, I did work for Arnold Karp for a little over a year and a half, um, part-time and I thought just to be as impartial, to make sure that I did not put the town at any sort of disadvantage or anything or, or anyone else, in either way, I thought it best to recuse for myself from that decision. And I think that that was, I stand by that decision. So I, I just wanted to share that with everybody and I've really enjoyed working on the Board of Finance, I really enjoy uh, working um with everybody and collaborating on the Board of Finance, so um, I, I would look forward to working with everybody and continuing in, in a full, full position on the Board of Finance.
And I think that tone speaks well, Maria for herself, is, at least that's how I've always worked with her. She is extraordinarily committed to this town, spends a gazillion hours working for this town and she does bring a finance background. Uh, and I applaud her recusing herself to protect the town.
Uh, so, so go ahead, Tom.
Oh, I just wanted to comment that um, as a matter of precedent, I would prefer that if somebody performs strong and uh consistent service on a board as an alternate, maybe the Board of Finance is the only example of this, but she has, she's not, there haven't been any criticisms about her performance on, on Board of Finance and she's been there and she's done it, so I think there should be a presumption of uh of, of, of extending that.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, you know, the point, the couple of points that are, that Hillary brought up that, and Maria, maybe you can comment on, on one of them, the Board of Ed, um wa, was there a, did you recuse yourself on a Board of Ed at some point as well? Board of Ed vote?
Board of Ed?
Yeah.
I, I was not on the Board of Ed.
I know, was there any reason that you would have recused yourself during the, the budget on the Board of Ed?
No.
Okay.
No, my point was that she tends, and, and it's, I'm not criticizing
No, my point was that she tends in, and it's, I'm not criticizing it. She testifies to the Board of Ed a lot. She has a lot of opinions about things that come before the Board of Ed that might impact their budget. And to me, if you are gonna be deciding their budget, are you putting your thumb on the scale and saying how you were going to vote on something? Before it comes to you objectively, right? And, you know, can you separate the two? And look at the Board of Ed budget, you know, I think, and it's a testament to you and your strong argument abilities. You have very strong opinions, which I value, which I appreciate. Um, I just wonder, can you look at that objectively? Can you then look at the Board of Ed budget without seeing it through a lens of how you want to see it politically? I, I don't know if I'm saying that as, you know, elegantly as I'd like, but to me, it just, I don't know if I can. Separate the two. It's hard for me to trust that there isn't more going on there. And that's my concern. That is my concern. I'm, I'm an elected official. If people don't like my opinions, if people don't like what I can say, they can vote me out. You're appointed. And once somebody is appointed, particularly to a board that has so much power. I mean, by the time we get the budget, we can only cut. The Board of Finance can add, can move around, does all of these things. You know, you're appointed and you, you know, barring something really terrible happening or unethical, you're gonna serve until you don't want to. Right? We're gonna, it, it, we're not gonna, I'm never gonna bring this stuff up again. If you guys decide to vote her onto the Board of Finance. I'm not gonna bring up things that happened before she was appointed to her fold. It, it, it's gonna be limited to her service on the board as a full-time member. So I would feel remiss and irresponsible if I didn't bring up my concerns now. It's not personal. Um, it's, it's just concerns that I would feel like I wasn't doing my job if I didn't bring these things up. And, and that's what I have to say. I have no doubts about her commitment to this town. I have no doubts about the job that she has done. These are just some concerns that weigh on me and, and looking at our budget and, and the decisions that have to be made.
Thank you.
And I would just, I would just add that I, I, I have um, been involved with the schools as well and I, and I think I bring. I did that as well. I did serve as the uh PTC president at Saks for two years while my oldest was at school. And uh, there, my middle, actually my middle one. Um, so I mean, I, I, I've been involved with the schools as well. And I always look at every decision as, as it needs to be made, but you know, the, the. Unique situation with the, the seven fifty-one weed really made sense to recuse myself. I don't see there being any reason. That I would not operate in, in a, just a very. Uh, bipartisan matter. I think, I think when anybody thinks about the Board of Finance, we look down the row. You can't tell who is. A Republican or a Democrat on that and, and it's, it truly is just people working together, trying to come up with the best solutions. For our town to spend our money wisely, our taxpayers' money wisely. So I, I don't, I don't see that there would be any issue with that. But thank you for your concern, Hillary.
Can you address your um, statements about the PTC presidents that I believe were untrue?
I think that's appropriate here.
Why? It's a judgment call. It's a judgment call. It's a judgment call.
PTC presidents?
Yes, at West, that you went online and, and besmirched their reputations, the two parent volunteers.
I don't believe I besmirched anybody's reputation.
I have the Facebook post that I could read.
Well, I think, I think if, you know, when, when we're talking about what happened during the election, if that's what you're referring to and you're politicizing this. Um, you know, uh, one would, one would think that as a PTC president, that it might have made sense to. Um, not step into all of that, which is something that we were very cognizant of when I was.
They didn't, Maria. They didn't. You brought them into it and, and a sitting Board of Ed member called them up and told them. That they better think about what they're doing. No, it's not. I have, I have the, I have it written down, what was said. I have it.
But we don't have it.
I can send it to you right now. It's on Facebook.
It's too late. We're here, we're here making a decision.
I don't think Hillary would make it up. I mean, I, I don't think you should question that. I have a question about if Maria was a. Employed by Arnold Carp, how will that affect um, any kind of recusals or things on the Board of Finance? If affordable housing or eight thirty G funding comes up. In reference to these specific projects that he's working on.
Well, I did recruit, you recused myself from that specific uh decision.
So in the future, that would be.
I would imagine if, you know, I'm hypothetically, again, I don't know what's gonna come in front of us. So what I would say is that if there is a project just to protect the town. And, and in terms of, you know, being incredibly impartial on it, I would not be voting on any proposals. That have to do with Arnold Carp because I did work for him for a little bit over a year and a half, part-time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Uh, Rita.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I just, I have the same concerns that, um, some of the same concerns that Hillary, I, I don't need to repeat them. So I, I just wanna go on record also to say that I have similar concerns. I think, again, and, and. Similar to what Hillary said, I do respect, you know, we all have strong opinions. I think we all pride ourselves in the fact that we do things for our town, whether we're whatever party we're from. And that we try to take a bipartisan stance. I honestly don't think Maria's capable of that. I, 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 that's, I think she has, she puts party first before other things. That's my experience. And that, that along with some of the other things does concern me in general. Um, because I don't think that's the spirit of, that's, that's how we should be operating. And the fact that this isn't an elected position. To me, that makes that even more of a concern. So that, that's, I just wanna put that out there as well.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're trying to, we're trying to judge somebody here on their, on their ability to serve on the Board of Finance and their financial background. And their, the history of what they've done on the Board of Finance so far and, you know. All of those things, you know, the stuff on Facebook and all this stuff. I don't, I'm, I'm not a Facebook person, so I don't get to see all that stuff, but. And that's part of the reason why I don't like to see any of that stuff, because I have to judge people on their, on their, on their working record of what they're doing, but. Um, that's why we're gonna vote tonight. We're gonna have a vote and, you know, you can.
It's Mike. Can you guys hear me?
Hey, Mike.
Hey, um, have there been any complaints about Maria since she's been serving as an alternate? From any other Board of Finance members?
I'm not aware of any.
Maria?
No.
All right, thanks.
Maybe Kevin can speak to that.
I, I would just say Todd Laviere, the chairman, very much strongly supports Maria. Yeah, as far as, you know, sharing, you know, I don't know if anybody purports to be bipartisan. The reality is we're all doing what's best for New Canaan. But we, the Republicans have a different philosophies than Democrats. But that's a fact. So.
I would just like to remind everybody, this is an appointment for four years, I believe. It's not an eternity, Hillary. So I don't know if you were aware of that.
I'm, I'm completely aware that there are terms. I just know how it works in reality and as a practical matter. I don't, I can't foresee her, I, if we're, I mean, right now, we're judging it solely based on how she's been as an alternate. We're not, apparently, we're not allowed to bring up anything outside of that, which I think is strange. So it means somebody could do anything outside of that and we're not allowed to consider it, which I think is bizarre. Um, but if that's the way we wanna judge it, then that's the way we wanna judge it. Or whatever.
I just, go ahead.
No, just a quick question about the term. I thought it was three years. Is it four years?
It's four years.
Yes.
She's filling the, the balance of the term, that's why.
Oh, yeah, it's, we're feeling, cause Neil left and we're filling that slot. So she'll, that'll be the rest of Neil's.
Oh, so she's filling Neil's slot, which ends in twenty twenty-four? Oh, his term ended.
Whenever, whenever.
Whenever it ends, he had three more.
Oh, so, yeah, it's right here, November fifteenth of twenty twenty-four. Yeah, so it's really, we're actually, it's two years, two years from November.
Okay.
Steve, I'll just quickly comment that um. I've known Maria pretty well for quite a while and I would definitely confirm Hillary's assertion that, that Maria is a passionate partisan. And uh, I, I'm just not sure that it is a strike against her in serving on the Board of Finance. Uh, if I could see a tie there, I'd be concerned too, but I, I don't, I don't see the tie between those two things.
Okay.
Call the vote.
All right, vote is, is called. So um, all those in favor of the appointment of Maria Weingarten as a regular member. For a term ending November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four to the Board of Finance, raise your hands. Opposed? Let's, let's keep them up so we get, get a.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, so um, yays, yays, but yays up. You got that? Oh, actually, Penny, you, you need to get this, sorry. So it's, sorry. It's uh, Base Mason.
Okay, so. Okay, so. Um, um, Base Mason.
Yay.
Patino.
Nay.
Butterworth.
Yay.
Mark Gamski.
Hey.
Carl.
Yay.
Kaufman, he's not here. Black Morrow.
Mike, you out there?
Mike?
He might be on the cell.
Pick yourself off mute.
Yeah. Norton.
Yay.
Norton.
I'm abstaining.
Ormon.
No.
Ross.
Yay.
And Young, yes. One, two, three, four, five, six. Yeses, one, two, three, four, no's.
And then six, four. So.
I mean, um.
Yeah, so that's a good question about um, voting. What do we decide? I guess because of the state, you can vote on something like this. From a Zoom.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because that, that's been part of the town council rules, that we weren't gonna do that, but now under emergency, we can do it, all right.
That's right. Still under emergency, so we can vote now.
Now, do we have Mike yet or is he uh?
But he's on, but he's got himself on mute and I keep on asking him to unmute.
This is not a vote for um, a ordinance or funding.
Right.
When, whi- which is when we need seven votes. So why is this not the um, majority of the vote for the evening?
Well, it would be. Sixty-four, sixty-four carries. That's the way it is.
So it carries, right?
Penny, you know the rules. We have to rely on you for this.
Written them a hundred times.
Oh, it's six, six, three, one.
Yeah, you want to, want to stanchion.
One, stanchion, right, six, three, one.
Right.
Not six, four.
Okay, good. All right. Let's hope the next one isn't so, so, so difficult. All right, number one, next, next up, appointment of James Yao as an alternate member of the term ending December first, twenty twenty-three. And James is here this evening. James, why don't you come up to the mic here and we'll, we'll say hello.
Is that Mike?
Yeah. How he's on.
Mike, would you vote uh yay or nay?
Sorry, guys, I apologize. I'm preparing somebody. Um, yes, I vote in favor. Sorry about that.
Okay, all right, so that's seven.
Okay, thank you. A little chaotic. Thank you, Zoom. All right, welcome, James.
All right.
How are you?
Wow, I hope that this doesn't go like the last.
So we've had a, a bunch of emails back and forth with you and uh, first of all, we wanna thank you for raising your hand and agreeing to uh. Uh, potentially get onto the Board of Finance and I'll open up the floor to questions and um, indoor comments. So if anybody wants to start, you wanna start with James?
Yeah, I've already reached out to, I, I guess, the board and asked anybody with any concerns or questions. I, I wanna thank both Mark and Rita for taking the time to speak with me. So appreciate that. Um, but I'm obviously here if you have any remaining concerns or questions to address them.
Question, one question. Um, again, sorry, I'm on social media a lot. Do you think you would need to recuse yourself from any carp-related issues?
Uh, I think I might have to. And the reason being, uh, if you follow into planning and zoning, they have. Uh, the attorney Hollister has said, anybody who said anything negative or anything supportive of not. Having him not move forward.
Yeah.
And uh, or sign the petition. And obviously, I'm personally not in favor of that, so I did do that. So I guess I would have to, by his definition, recuse himself. Find it kind of ironic that he. Hollister wasn't involved in our housing authority and the moratorium as much as he has been. But other people have to recuse themselves simply because they don't support the position.
Some irony there for sure.
Yeah.
I will ask a question.
Penny.
James.
Yes.
I just thought I would add to the.
Yeah.
Um, during the caucus, when we were um, uh, running for town council. You and I had a discussion about your um, uh, opinion of the town council's. Uh, competence to um, discuss the budget. And you indicated that you didn't think the town council knew what we were doing when it came to the town council. And I questioned you about that, as to whether or not you really had attended any town council meetings. And really knew the depth to which every one of us goes to understand all parts of the budget.
Yeah, I'm, oh, go ahead. You wanna finish or, well, first off.
I, I finished that, that, that uh, conversation with you by reminding you that the town council had just brought in. Three years of a flat budget, so that I thought maybe that the town council knew a little bit about what we were doing with the budget.
No, I absolutely, I remember that conversation. Uh, and um, I don't think I ever said. Or questioned the competency of the town council in any way. Um, I'm more, I'm more, my question was, I, I think you made a statement that. Uh, you didn't feel that it was in the town council's power to, to kind of make judgments on certain things. And I think we had a differing opinion that I said that since you have the final veto power. That you did have some ability to control what moves forward through the town council. But I don't think in any way I ever questioned the competency of the town council or doubted your intentions.
And I would hope that since that time and now you have educated yourself on what the powers of the town council are. And, and how much in-depth that we actually do, you know, go into the budget.
No, I, I definitely appreciate the, yeah, you go, but, you know, I think, I think I, I spoke with, I think Rita about this to some extent. I, I think it would really benefit both the town council, maybe the Board of Finance. If more people knew these committees and all the, all the, the discussions that go on. Before the town council meeting on budget, right? Because when I'm, when people see the town council meeting on budget, they say, oh, well, they just voted on this. Or they just voted on that. They could have said no instead, right? I, I think they don't have an appreciation for the stuff that goes on in the background and it would. It would be a great benefit if that kind of information got out there. That, hey, listen, we've already gone, we've already vetted through this, so we already discussed this. It's not a first-time thing.
Yeah, I'm sure that the citizenry doesn't look at the posted meetings. Because all of our subcommittee meetings are posted and, and so.
Oh, no, just the fact that they exist. Yeah, just the fact that they exist and what's being discussed there. I think, yeah, Rita, we spoke about it, would really help.
I usually, I usually have to disclaimer uh, some point, a few times during the budget season, but it's, you have to catch it in between the four-hour meetings. So I usually mention the fact that we have other meetings beside these meetings, but it's usually during one of those four-hour ones.
Can I make a comment?
Kim.
Yeah, hi. Um, so I just wanna speak a little bit about, I got to know James very well during the um, caucus process. And the whole um, running for town council and, and all those things. And I have to say that I think, James, you have the utmost respect. For the town council. And I think when people have conversations that are a little bit, you know, contentious, there can be distortions in what someone hears. And then what, what, you know, may not be intended or whatever. Um, so I, you know, I, I think you had a great relationship with John Engel. I think he um, encouraged you to run for town council. I mean, there, there's just like a lot of, you know, positive feelings. Uh, between you and the town council. So I'm not concerned at all that you wouldn't be able to work extremely well if there was a, you know, committee or whatever. That that would be an issue. So I just wanna say thank you for stepping up again. And um, I think you would be a great addition to the Board of Finance.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And James, I, you know, uh, some folks have said, hey, uh, I remember James because of the start time issue. Well, that's how we got to know you in the beginning. And if you do the research that you do on issues that you're concerned about. And you do the, you do the research and the work on the Board of Finance, like you do on some of the stuff you've done in town. There's no doubt in my mind that New Canaan will be in a better place. So um, you, you really do do the work and no one's ever gonna take that away from you, so.
I like numbers.
Well, yeah, and I, and I think, you know, being part of that Board of Finance team and, and serving your community is, is gonna be a nice thing for you to do. And we really appreciate you stepping up to the.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I consider it a privilege. And I've spoken to Todd, I've spoken to Michael Chen, I've even spoken to Neil as well. Uh, and you know, it just reaffirms my commitment to it.
Well, thank you, Jim. Sorry, we're going to call the vote then. All right, so uh, do you want to do the roll again? Do that, it's easier.
Sure. All right, uh, Robin mates.
Yes.
Rita.
Yeah, there, yes.
Butterworth.
Yes.
Mark Jamski.
Yes.
Steve Carl.
Yes.
The coffin is not here. Mike Morrow.
Yes.
Maria Norton.
Yes.
Kimberly Norton.
Yes.
Hillary Orman.
Yes.
Christina Ross.
Yes.
Penny Young, yes, it's unanimous.
Thank you, James.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Congratulations, James.
Thank you.
Remember, it's an alternate.
James, thanks for reaching out. I think, I think everyone should do that. No, I, I agree, because a lot of questions are answered.
All right, last but not least. For the ethics board, the appointment of John Fulkerson for a term ending December first, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Fulkerson, will you take? We, uh, tonight, I'm going to say, will you take the stand? It's really, it's, it's like the hot seat up there. Unbelievable. Holy smokes, welcome.
As, as it should be, fire when ready, folks.
Well, first of all, we want to thank you for stepping up to the plate. I got a chance to talk to you. Uh, you actually stopped by my office and we had a nice chat and uh we've, we, we did some research on you, deep dive, and uh I was very, to say, to say we have talent in this town is an understatement. I mean, what you bring to the table is absolutely amazing. So um, maybe you want to say a few words and just introduce yourself and then we'll, we'll, we'll take some questions.
If you will forgive me for being a native Texan, I'll carry on. Um, that, that's always a problem for me. Uh, but I've been doing this work. I have a PhD in psychology. I work primarily with executives in organizations to help them be more effective. And I've been doing this work for fifty years, literally. Um, and I don't plan to retire entirely because I love doing the work. As far as ethics are concerned, um, I served on the school board in Ridgefield. I served on uh planning and zoning in Ridgefield. And I got my feet wet there. And I have to tell you, being on a school board, I think I still have scar tissue. Um, but it was a learning experience for sure. Planning and zoning was much more legal in terms of what we did. But I feel very strongly about taking ethical standards and carrying them to the absolute highest level kind of thing. When I was an undergraduate, I was told that we don't latch, eat or steal or tolerate those who do. And when I was in graduate school getting my doctorate, it was very clear about the ethics that were required. And with people that I deal with on an individual and collective basis, um, I run into a lot of stuff where people are shading the truth or they're trying to do something that they really shouldn't be doing. Uh, I was at PepsiCo for many years and we had some, uh, some problems there where we actually had to restate earnings. There were literally several million dollars that were lost in some stuff in the Philippines and in Brazil. And we had to deal with it, and we did, and we did it forthrightly and directly. And I think that uh that's what I would try to do with the ethics board. I've read the, the document about what's required, what's there. I have a lot of questions. And yes, I read the newspaper and I have to say there must be some backstory there that I don't have. And I don't need to worry about that right now. Deal with that later. So any questions that you've got about me or my background?
Thanks, John. Uh, questions for the council? For Mr. Fulkerson.
As a fellow PepsiCo uh employee, I'm excited to have you aboard.
That's great, Rita. Thank you very much.
Kim.
Hi, Dr. Fulkerson. I'm Dr. Norton. I also have a PhD in psychology, so welcome.
Thank you very much. Can you do some therapy with me?
Um, given, you know, given the theatrics that have recently been reported on on the ethics committee, I, I was just curious to know your thoughts on perhaps how to avoid something like that happening again. I mean, my understanding, if I read the paper correctly, and anyone correct me if I'm wrong, that the lawyers that were on the ethics committee decided to lawyer themselves, which I know that Kevin has not recommended people doing. So how, how do you kind of stop that process from unraveling? Till it gets to the point where it's kind of gone like a, a runaway freight train? When it, it sounds like it didn't really need to go in that direction if it had been stopped, um, you know, in time?
Right. I, I don't know that I can answer that directly, but I will tell you, I would ask a lot of questions. Why and how are we doing this? What's the process for this? What should we do? Should we not do? And perhaps being naive, that's the best way to approach it. If I don't know anything, I'm going to ask lots of questions. And then I can make a determination about what I should or shouldn't do.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? For Dr. Fulkerson? Mike, are you out there? Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so we are ready, ready to vote.
But before you do, I'll just say that Dr. Fulkerson is a neighbor and I will not recuse myself on that basis. Because he has an excellent reputation.
Bates Mason.
Yes.
Patino.
Yes.
Butterworth.
Yes.
Jamski.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Goffman is not here. Morrow.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Orman.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
And Young, yes, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
I, I can go home and tell my wife not to pay the ransom.
Thank you, Josh.
Love that Texas humor.
Well, that's a nice way to end it. It's, I mean, it's really important to, you know, laugh and, and uh and put some of this stuff aside as we go forward. I mean, everybody, I said before, I, I preach civility, we're all in this together. I mean, we're none of us are above any of us and, and we work best as a team. None of us are ever going to agree on every issue we have in town. So, you know, folks put the time in, they, they serve this town, they believe in what they believe. And occasionally, we're going to disagree on things, but at the end of the day, it's the old Walter Stewart's rule, tomorrow, when Hillary passes Maria, Walter Stewart's market, and they have their carts going in the aisle, they're going to look each other in the eye and say, how you doing?
Yeah, we're friends. She's, I always go to her with questions, always, always go to her before my mom. Don't tell my mom this cooking questions. Always, because I know Maria will give me the straight answer. I appreciate her so much.
Got it. And I thank everybody again for their service. All right, moving on again to item number six. Waveney Public Restrooms. Uh, we are going to discuss and have an approval of a final location for the construction of outdoor public restrooms at Waveney Park. I am praying that Tiger Man is not on this call still because he's on vacation. So Tiger, let's hope you're not out there. If you're not out there, fine. Otherwise, uh we'll hear from you.
Oh, he texted.
He's on.
And he texted me, so.
Oh, my God. Tiger, Tiger, I, I apologize.
All right, Steve.
I mean, this is above and beyond the call, man.
Boys are playing mini golf. It's okay.
You have one minute, Matt. Yeah, so we just, just give us a quick recap. I mean, we don't really need to hear this. We're basically going to be voting on the location of the, of the bathrooms tonight. Uh, we've discussed this literally a nauseam. The bathrooms are going to be located at the end of the building, uh, which leaves the potting shed open to future use, whatever that use is. Did I say that correctly?
That, well, that was the proposal, yes. The proposal was to build a, an annex onto um, the powerhouse theater itself. Um, and then, excuse me. The uh, so the board of selectmen approved the funding. Board of finance approved the funding. Note, uh, without stipulation as to location and the council approved the funding with a stipulation that you wanted us to come back and talk about location, whether it was going to be an annex onto the powerhouse or in the potting shed itself. Um, and that's where it stood for up until this point. So yes, the proposal is to build an annex um off of the uh, off the powerhouse itself, off the theater. And then refurbish the potting shed um for future use, whatever that might be. Going forward, there is a proposal from the town players to utilize it. Um, but that could be uh for another day. But right now, we're at, we're at a stasis point because I can't move forward on either side. So I just need to know where the council would like to place the bathrooms and then we can move forward um, and, and start that process.
Thank you. And the point of this whole thing is not even the money, because we've already approved the money and everything is in place. It's just a, literally the location. And this is going to allow you to get the work done prior to, you think it'd be open by the time we hit sledding in the winter? Would it be done this year or are we talking about spring next year?
We're going to push for it, but it's getting a little late. Um, I still have to have the architect finalize the plans and then put them on the street. And um, as you know, everything is uh taking longer than expected recently. Um, but I, I would love to have it first for this year's sledding.
Good, thank you. Anybody need any clarity on that or?
No, I'll make a motion though.
Oh, I just have a question. Does the powerhouse have an opinion? The powerhouse theater?
Uh, yes, actually, Kim, that's a good point. So Patricia stopped and I spoke to her about this and she's a hundred percent in favor of, of moving forward and, and.
Okay, so it doesn't affect their plans.
They're, they're, they're excited that we're going to make a decision, so.
Okay, thank you.
It's like step one of ten. Let's take it.
Yeah.
Got one.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the final location for the construction of the outdoor public restrooms at Waveney Park. And I guess to be more specific, annex of the existing building.
Okay, second, second, Tom. All those in favor?
Mike.
Mike, you out there?
Mike.
Unmute.
At the same age, man.
Sorry, it's unanimous.
He's very important.
We'll put our, we'll put our hands down.
He's nodding.
Okay.
Oh, he's nodding. Okay, good. All right. Another slippery zoom slope. Where are you now? All right, item number seven. Thank you for waiting. Police Department Building Committee. There's a guy who has, has sat in the hot seat a few times himself.
Ah, brings back old memories. Yes, sir. Um, hello, town council.
Welcome back.
Great to be back. I missed a lot of you guys, missed all you guys. I haven't, didn't share with many of you, but uh, I've been buying you guys from afar. You guys are doing a great job, truly. And uh, speaking as a citizen in town, it's much appreciated. So thank you, because I know what you go through. And I know more importantly, what it's, what it's like to put yourself out there for a public election. And uh, it's a family, not just a commitment for you, it's a commitment for your whole family. And uh, it's a difficult one. And uh, um.
Thank you.
So hats off.
Setting the stage here for a big ass.
That's just for a pony or something.
That's in February. So the price went up. So Stuart's going to handle uh the technical aspects of this because you really don't want me touching a computer? Stuart, how are we looking?
Yes, sir, we're ready.
We're good. All right. So we're going to give you an update on some of the decisions we've based since the last time we spoke with you guys uh at the, uh, the joint meeting. Uh, lay out some possible next steps for the town bodies to consider going forward and ask for some money. Yeah. Uh, to enable our architect to get started. So we're a deep and experienced team. And um, you know, Jim Bell has extensive experience with numerous town building committees. Uh, Amy Murphy Carroll, board of finance, Michael Chen, board of finance, Paul Foley, who's listening in, uh, police commission. Uh, Mike, thank you, Mike, or the town council, Penny here tonight, board of Ed, who was the head of the Saks Building Committee, which went very, very well. Paul Toly, an experienced builder, uh, Stuart, uh, I'm, you know, while he's here, I'm going to embarrass him and basically say um, speaking of thanking volunteers in this community, in this town, uh, Stuart has logged hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours uh on town safety uh initiatives uh, for the town of uh, New Canaan. And uh, just going to be, we're proud to have him as uh, as our advisor as well. So Stuart, thank you very much. Just don't mess up my slides, buddies. And um, oh, by the way, he did this presentation. And of course, the, the Public Works Department, uh, Tiger Joe, uh, who was our owner's rep for building this building. And of course, the town, uh, he then came to work for the town and he's been a advisor for us as well. He's obviously doing an amazing job. We've had two building assessment firms doing the poking and prodding on the existing uh facility, uh, two architecture firms and two cost estimators. So we've uh we've been keeping ourselves busy for the last year and a half. Uh, from a timeline perspective, this thing has been right up the flagpole for a long, long time. So uh, that's good. People have had a chance to uh uh, come to an agreement that something needs to be done with the police station. It started a long, long time ago. And I think there's a, a unanimous belief that this is sort of the next project in line. Uh, the choices. We're trying to answer these questions. Location, where to put it? What will it look like? Who's going to do it? What will give the long, the town the best long-term bang for the buck? And what can we provide our police department so that we have the uh that we ensure that we have the best, the most trained police department, not just in the state of Connecticut, but in the, in the country. And so that's our goal. I know that's Leon's goal. Uh, and I know it's uh with you guys here every day from uh, good year constituents. And so that's, we're going to try to give them the best facility possible. On the first question, location, as you know, the town looked at fourteen different alternatives. None of them really panned out. They were all uh decayed for one reason or another, so we're going to keep it where it is. Um, and I think uh, that was agreed upon also, uh, county notices that the, the joint joint meeting we had a few, uh, few months ago. The architect, there are basically two architects that do uh most police buildings in the, in this area, or in the whole Northeast. Uh, Casaboo's and Jakunski Humes. Uh, they're, they're both wonderful, um, absolutely amazing work. We visited uh numerous of their numerous uh police stations. Uh, the surrounding areas uh designed by both of them. Uh, we've talked to their uh, their, their customers. And uh, in the end, we decided to go with uh Brian Humes of Jakunski Humes. And uh, Brian is on, I believe, and we'll be talking a little bit later. So that's the architect that, that we decided to go with uh as a building committee. To continue using the current police building site, we have to deal with the obvious. It's a nearly a hundred year old building. Uh, we purposed as a police station forty years ago. We know what the world looked like ninety-four years ago when this thing was built. Um, and uh you should also be aware, you guys are probably aware, the police stations are building, our buildings are different, that uh, you have to be better than your average police uh, should be better than your average town building. Um, they're an essential building, which means that uh defined by state and national regulations, it has to remain functioning during any type of emergency, earthquake, hurricane, powder out, power outage, uh, et cetera. So uh, police stations are different and uh frankly, have to meet a higher standard. Um, so what to do with the uh, with the original building? Our recommendation is to retain the historic structure, get the insides and renovate as new. We're going to, we'll talk to a little bit more in detail about that. Uh, we talked a little bit about this at the, at the joint meeting. Um, and so uh, that uh decision hasn't really, uh, hasn't really changed. Uh, of course, you can't recommend that without uh bringing in experts to make sure that the guts of the building are, are strong. Uh, we brought in uh Hoffman Architects, um, who gave us a twenty-six page report back in March, uh, highlighting some of the things that uh can and will be done, need to be done to ensure that the uh building uh is uh going to last us another fifty to a hundred years. All of the work uh is in the cost estimates uh that we'll get to it a little bit uh later. Uh, we also looked at hazardous waste, uh, so hazardous waste, hazardous materials in the building. Uh, we brought in Fasid O'Neil to look at that. Uh, hey, you could always be surprised, but their estimate was basically seventy-five thousand dollars worth of incremental work to uh do uh for the police station to uh, to get out the other other things that they need to uh, to get out or, or to check for. So um, in in the end, and there was a lot of the backup material that you could see all the pictures and all the recommendations, but in the end, the building committee, the architects are very confident that this uh building itself uh can be uh, used for the next fifty to a hundred years, that uh, the, the bones are very good. And that what we plan to do with it will only make it uh better, frankly. So uh, as far as uh whether peace, uh, police should vacate the building, we think they should. Uh, it's a little more expensive to do so, but it solves a lot of other uh, minimizes your risk going forward for all kinds of things. Again, we talked about this at the joint meeting, but the, and so that decision hasn't changed. So we get to the edition. Let's talk um why we think it's a good idea tearing down the back of the building and um replacing it with a new purposely designed addition. Uh, house most of our most critical elements of a police station, the cells, the Sally Port, uh, the prisoner processing, things uh that you really, things where things can go wrong. Right? This is where angry people are um deal, where our police department is dealing with people that are not at their best. And uh, it's very, very important that uh we provide everyone uh the safest environment uh, for that to uh, for that to happen. Traffic flow is another thing that can be improved. So that's why we believe. for that to for that to happen. Traffic flow is another thing that can be improved. So that's why we believe in tearing down the back edition. This is what we're talking about tearing down.
That's what it looks like now.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're looking at tearing down that stuff in the back.
Glad that that's what we're gonna do. I was like, please tell me that's not what it's.
It's ugly, right? No one even takes credit for knowing when the thing was actually built, which is also a little scary. But someone wants like that. So a new addition, after we tear, our proposal to tear that down, and Brian Hughes will talk more to it, Liam will talk more to it. Our replacement for this addition will actually be smaller than this space because we're gonna be able to purposely design it to what is actually needed. You know, we've, you know, we've been forced fitted a police station into an old building. And so if you want to if you want to compare it to, let's say, Town Hall, is a is a good example, because we're gonna get to some numbers that basically, you know, you can't help but compare to Town Hall. So Town Hall built, call it two thousand thirteen to two thousand and fifteen. The addition, the new addition is about a third of the total building. The building itself is thirty-five thousand square feet. So thirty-five thousand square foot building, ten percent of it, ten thousand square feet, thirty percent, ten thousand square feet is new. That building eight years ago cost eighteen million dollars. That's what this cost. And so when you look at numbers, and we'll get to the, you know, the real bottoms up numbers and cost estimators and their conclusions. But if you look at it just from a top-down view and say, okay, pick a midpoint of when this construction was done, second quarter two thousand and fourteen, the Turner Construction Index at that time, non-residential construction index, so Turner, right, largest construction company, they put out an index, it was eight ninety-six at second quarter two thousand and fourteen. Today, it's twelve eighty-three. That's a forty-three percent increase. So basically, since this town hall was built, construction costs, non-housing, non-residential, construction costs are up forty-three percent. So if you wanna do a back of the envelope, you'd say forty-three percent increase times the eighteen million, you get to twenty-five point seven five million. Now, that's, you know, that's an apples, oranges compare. There are a lot of things different about both of these projects. Police buildings actually are a little more expensive technically because there's a lot of specialized things about a police building. They did some preservation work here in the old building that, you know, we wouldn't have to do as well. So, you know, this isn't an exact comparison. It's just sort of a a sanity check, if you will, when we get to the numbers. So why do we think that tearing down the back is a is a good idea? And just so you know what it is incrementally, it's five and a half million roughly, okay, to do it that way, to tear it on the back and provide something that's purposely designed for all the important elements of a police station versus trying to make it work, not doing it that way. Brian Humes, are you out there?
Yes, Bill.
Um, so why don't we go to chart nineteen, which is too ahead? So we'll let Brian go first and then Leon will talk a little bit. So on nineteen, Stuart, there we go. Brian, we have your your chart up and why don't you introduce yourselves to the town council, sir?
Good evening. Brian Humes, I'm a principal at Jakubski Humes Architects. We have been working with the building committee for the last year and a half, trying to find a proper solution for the new Canaan Police Department. In addition to the last year and a half, though, we have had over ten years' experience in town working on that building because we were the architects for renovating the third floor. We were also the architects for the EMS facility located adjacent to the police department. So we do have history on the site. We have history of the building. And we've done multiple designs on trying to solve the needs of the department. As Chairman Walbert said, we we first tried to utilize the existing building. We then looked at demolishing the back addition and providing a purpose-built addition on the back. With the two designs, I think there are some significant differences between the two that make the proposed plan to demolish and build new, the preferred plan. And the building committee had asked me to put together some thoughts on why the five and a half million dollar ask was a considerate ask. And I put together five topics that should be considered in this whole process. One is if we tear down the back addition, we have the ability to improve site circulation on the site. The improved site circulation is only possible if we design a purpose-built addition on the rear. It gives us an opportunity to reconfigure the site slightly to improve parking. Parking's a concern with the department, but also looking at site circulation patterns on the site. We've proposed to revise that. The police department are looking at that currently to see if that's a wise choice for them. But going in this direction allows us to, in my opinion, improve the site circulation. The number two item on my list was an improved Sally Port and storage base. A Sally Port is a garage that the police department utilized for transfer of prisoner or detainees. The current Sally Port is a one-bay, limited height, limited in size, and it's a drive-in and back-out configuration. With the new design, we have proposed a drive-through Sally Port, which aids in safety and in transport of prisoners. It has an increased door height, so we have an ability to bring in ambulances or other emergency vehicles if they have to aid in the transport of prisoners. So a drive-through Sally Port is a much better configuration for the police department than the current drive-in back-out. By specifically designing an addition on the rear, a purpose-built addition, we can really get more efficient for police functions and adjacencies of functions. So putting police functions next, patrol functions next to patrol functions, evidence functions next to evidence functions, improving prisoner processing and detention cells and locker rooms, getting the adjacencies right is really what's advantageous in the proposed plan. And then the fourth item was in improved efficiency and prisoner processing prisoner handling. This is where there's the greatest number of accidents within police facilities, handling and transporting or handling detainees within prisoner processing areas. The proposed design versus the existing plan improves that safety and security for the officers a great deal. We have properly sized and properly designed prisoner processing areas, detention areas, separation of detainees and processing through Sally Ports into prisoner processing areas in a safe and secure manner is possible in the new in the new proposed plan. If I was able to tear down the back addition and build a new addition, the fifth item would be energy efficiency. We don't know when that last addition was built, but the energy codes were different, building codes were different. The current codes require us to build a much more efficient envelope. Increasing insulation values in walls and roofs would make a more efficient building. And that would be the fifth item, so we can improve the energy efficiency of the of the entire building. We are putting a two-story addition to the rear, so that two-story addition would envelop the back of the existing building. They exist the former school. So that would also gain in efficiencies and and energy efficiencies because of the new addition. So those are, those are my talking points. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Brian. Leon, do you want to uh, talk to this topic as well?
Yeah, just quickly, without being repetitive, it's it's a great investment. The current space is really inefficient and and kind of odd and wonky. Knocking down that addition will will allow us to be purposeful in the spaces that are really essential for us, or jails, or fitness room, or locker rooms, et cetera. And there'll be a space efficiency in a way that will will lose twenty-five hundred square feet, but that's a good thing because there's a lot of wasted space in that current addition. And that'll also result in some cost savings operationally for the building, less thirty-five, twenty-five hundred square feet certainly calculates over X decades of years. And I think this is a good investment, given this is likely a fifty-year solution, and it makes the most sense. Given that I've lived in this building for more than thirty years and spent thousands of hours in these spaces, it really makes the most sense and is best compromised if we can't get a brand-new building. This is the best outcome.
So getting to the the numbers, we'll go to page twenty-one, I guess, cost comparison, as I mentioned. So option A is basically just cutting the existing building, taking the people out, concludes the relocation costs, things like that. And trying to give the police the best building we can with the existing envelope. So that's coming in with all contingencies fully loaded, including relocation at about twenty-two, twenty million to twenty-two-five. Option B would be doing similar thing to what we did here with the Town Hall, basically adding on a new addition. Here, if the police, we tear down part of it, adding adding approximately twenty-five percent new building. So twenty-five percent new is basically what you're getting there, but it'd be housing the some of the more important elements of a of a police department. And that cost, as estimated out by our cost estimators, twenty-five and a half to to twenty-eight and a half. And like I said, so it's about a five and a half million dollar difference. You know, why the range? I mean, these are cost estimates with built in with price increases into February. We could talk about that. Do we know what cost will be in February? We have no idea. Certainly, they spiked up here recently. If the economy continues to roll over, there's every reason to believe that cost may come down, but certainly no one, certainly no one knows what cost will be, which is why we're not asking for a a final number, because we don't know, you know, what that final number will be. We wanna ask for one number once and not come back. So these are the numbers, as as from a bottoms-up perspective, I told you the the top, sort of the top-down, just sort of a back of the envelope, does this even make any sense? They and they come out very closely. As far as our ask tonight, it would, what we'll be asking, we've asked the Board of Finances, just the way the meetings worked out. They did not have a vote on their agenda, but certainly gave us a indication that one point two billion dollars would be approved at their August meeting. We'll certainly be talking that to the selectmen on Tuesday. And the one point two really will be added to the three hundred thousand we currently have in our budget to get Brian started on on the more specific drawings so that we can put it out to bid and get a final number for this project in February, where town bodies will have the final, you know, approval of 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 the of the plan at that point. Obviously, you know, as as we go, we'll certainly be giving you guys updates as updates as well. So that's where we are. That's sort of the ask. We should also talk to page twenty-two, which is the the firing range. There's a lot of work being done with other communities because we want the best way to train our police. And other communities feel the same way. It is something that can be shared. And so we are talking to a lot of police departments about how that may happen. So we don't know how that's gonna necessarily play out. Discussions are ongoing. And but we want to make everyone aware that that is, you know, when we talk about police facility and police training, we can't forget that in the end, we will also be having some kind of a, call it a shooting range, call it a use-of-force training center. But that's what it is. And something that could actually be useful and best of breed for for our police, because if we've learned anything here in the last year, a well-trained police department is paramount. So.
Thank you, Bill. Question with council markup first.
First off, first off, thanks, Bill, for all your work and everyone, for that matter. So in a perfect world, from a timing standpoint, can we build? I mean, it just feels like this has been going on.
Yeah, so we would hope, yeah, yeah, yeah. We would hope to have drawings ready to put this thing out to bid in late winter, early spring, that's called a late winter. And then you it's a month or two to get the the bids back. And so we will be talking shovel in the ground, late spring, early summer, and construction eighteen months. Then, you know, the moving back process. So it could anywhere from summer of twenty-five to fall of twenty-five. I think that's a good
Good estimate. Question that I have the slide to my. This is.
Yep, yep.
I just have a question too. And I'm just trying to understand this. And again, thank you for everything you guys are doing. And I actually was able to tune into a couple of the meetings that are really, really informative. Have you figured out, and I don't have the square footage, like what the cost per square foot?
About six hundred.
And how it, yeah, okay, and how it, that's interesting, okay. And how that compares to other similar, either renovations or if you're looking at the addition, other new?
Yeah, police stations are different. And I'll let Brian, you know, maybe Brian chime in as well. And, you know, cost of, you know, the forty-three percent increase in the last eight years is has made comparing to other town projects just almost, you know, very difficult. And and I think, you know, I was, Penny was here running the the Saks Building Committee, and I don't remember what and I was on that with her, and I don't remember what the final square footage was there, dollar per square foot. But it probably would, I would think it had to be less because classrooms should be a lot cheaper to build than the sub blocks, sub blocks, cells. And, you know, costs have the mean streets of New Canaan. And, you know, costs have have certainly gone up. Brian?
Yeah, I have to agree. The cost that you're seeing here is comparable for public safety facilities in New England. Whenever we're talking about cost per square foot, we have to be comparable to other municipalities. And you have to look at being comparable by also adding escalation to the the cost of what other municipalities had. We did Darien. Darien's facility was ten years ago. Obviously, it was less dollars per square foot. But if you take Darien and you escalate it to two thousand and twenty-three, it's comparable. So so these, the facility that you're looking at in New Canaan is comparable. They are very expensive facilities to complete, and that's something every municipality has to do on a local level.
Thank you. So no question. Oh, Christine, Christina first.
Hi, I'd like to ask the EMS cost to separate the two buildings, the the building systems, is that included in this price or is that addition to?
The. Good, good.
Some of the EMS separations already taking place. What is not and will not be done, I believe, is the septic system will still remain.
And there's discussion of generators as well.
Discussion of generators is an open topic. They may not need it. I mean, when we anticipated at one point possibly exploring other locations, then moving the generator over and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. There was there was a punch list that would then then need to be taken care of. But if we're staying where we are, then that punch list reduces dramatically.
But are the costs associated with that included in this price estimate?
Yeah, I would say yes.
Incompassing. Are there any other departments that will be occupying the building besides the police department? Is the parking department going to go back there or?
Animal control is there as part of the police department. There is, there was, well, that's up to, I guess, Kevin.
Emergency Operations Center.
That was, Emergency Operations Center would be located there.
Okay, is the animal control then, are you going to build housing to keep the animals there? So that's not part of it. Okay, and the shooting practice range, is that part of the budget that you're presenting?
No, and that's why we wanted to to be right up front with that. It does not include a range. And we don't, we we debated internally what, you know, a whole, a placeholder number, you know, should we throw out a number out, throw a number out? And we decided, you know, you could it's just such a large range. Because depends on how many municipalities join in with us. Is it gonna be the town of New Canaan? Is it gonna, are we gonna partner with someone else, somewhere else? And so there's a pretty wide range of the numbers that we could throw out for for what this range is going to cost. But it. it's really premature to even to throw a number out there, I think.
Okay, is there
I thought you were gonna use the moving target, but you didn't think.
No, no, I was, you know, what it is not to throw out, what you're thinking about shooting it out, you know, sure. Uh, then every word you say is gonna be, you know.
Right, it's gonna be loaded, isn't it?
We could go on and on. Let's not shoot ourselves in the foot.
Yeah.
We're so funny. Yeah.
Will, will there be a a covered parking area for the police vehicles?
Brian, you wanna talk to that?
Current design does call for covered parking for fleet vehicles. Yes, be in the rear of the facility, and it's only accessed by fleet vehicles, not by public.
Assuming, assuming the new addition.
Yeah, assuming the new addition. Without the new addition, it's not.
Okay, so.
And also, we could put solar on the new addition.
Okay.
Um, if we do it, if we don't do a new addition, I think solar sort of goes away too.
Well, I would hope that we would use whatever measures we can to conserve energy and install it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, the uh, a new addition in the back would make make all that happen. Most of that happened. Uh, without the new addition in the back, uh, we really can't do a lot of uh, do a lot of that.
But it sounds like to not do the addition in the back is like a three-legged horse. It wouldn't address the needs that you're looking to address.
Agree.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Tom, so the two point five million for the training center, that assumes a robust capability in center.
Yes, and and again, the the capabilities that are being discussed for the shooting range uh vary based on where eventually goes, the two point five million, which I wouldn't say, uh, but is in the chart. Um, is a number that you know won't be right. Um, it's gonna be lesser, it's gonna be more. Uh, and depending on how many partners we have and who, you know, bites off more of it, uh, will be, you know, the final number for us. But uh, I'll let Leon talk to the more important elements of uh a shooting range. Uh, pistol, rifle, potentially uh one that could have a car, because that's where a lot of this trading does happens. But Leon is obviously the expert.
Yeah, so this is a a literally a statewide deficiency. There's no real good facilities uh of this nature. And um, there's definitely interest in Fairfield County amongst multiple police departments to partner with us. Um, we don't yet have a sales package where we can go to them and say, hey, this is what it's gonna look like, this is what it's gonna cost, this is your contribution. Uh, so once we move that ball further down the road, then I think there'll be real interest because there's nowhere right now that's indoors covered where officers can qualify with rifle. And uh, that's a real deficiency across multiple departments throughout Fairfield County. And um, so not only will this be able to be used for uh firearms qualification, but it can be used for emergency services exercises. We thought the fire department could use it for various things. They could bring a car in there in the wintertime, they could cut the car apart, they could do all kinds of things. EMS could you use it for casualty treatment and evacuation and processes there. And we could combine certain resources there and use that for training functions that we just don't have the space for now.
So it's possible that the incremental cost from going from like the back of the trailer shooting range to this could actually be funded through partnerships Yes. with the other organizations. So it's like, we'd be crazy not to do robust if if we could pull that off, then we have great, and then they, and we also have the revenue.
Would we, would it be capital contributions or the rent?
Or we're projecting a a bond contribution annually.
For partners?
Yes.
There's, there's lots to be discussed, but that that would be one good idea, for example.
How long does it take to build a training facility like this, like a state-of-the-art, large training facility?
I, uh, it'd be a wild guess, uh, probably be six to twelve months. I mean, Brian could probably give us more detail on that.
So it would be on the same timeline effectively as this, or it could be sooner?
We want the town bodies to think of these things jointly. Because uh, it's very important to what we're, we believe a police uh department needs. Um, the fact that we don't have a place to put it right now is uh makes it difficult to, you know, to to put it in the numbers or and anything like that. So uh, we want, you know, we want everyone to think of it as a package going forward. But the reality is, we don't have a lot of details on that part of the.
But it wouldn't be on site of the police station.
No, we looked at that uh very closely. Um, and it was really decided that putting a a live shooting range uh in that uh neighborhood uh with uh with the very close uh neighbors uh would just not be a very good idea.
Does it need to be on town utilities, like sewer? I mean, obviously you need light electricity, but do you also need town water, town sewer? So would it need to feed into the the town utilities?
It all depends on the location.
Okay.
Um, but if if in some of the locations we looked at, um, we'd actually build a septic system.
Okay.
Which would be its in independent own septic system. We would, I think, require town water, obviously power in all instances.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maria.
What other towns around it? Like, does Norwalk have a range in Stamford? Like, who would be possibly?
Yeah, we want to be careful about the size of the department because that could just uh outline the capacity. Um, so I'm targeting smaller to mid-sized departments for interest. But uh, Norwalk has an indoor pistol range. I don't believe they qualify with rifles, not long enough or or adequate enough. Uh, Stamford's is a relatively new range.
And probably the best one around, right? It's the newest.
It's the newest and most, and Brian could speak to that a little bit, but uh, so we're we're gonna, we're very, being very specific about how we're approaching. Once we get a sales package, we'll approach them. Uh, the problem is if you get departments of three or four hundred people, that's really gonna outstrip your capacity and then use and and limit it for our use and for smaller.
And other towns have voiced an interest, a noted one on their property as well. Um, and so uh, uh, you know, that's also a possibility that uh that we wind up partnering with a different, with another town that, you know, they have more land, some place that they could put it, and it's uh, and it's there.
That's what I was wondering. There's that range up on Route seven that's already.
Well, there's, there's some new things there.
Yeah, there's a, we looked at that, we looked at a possibility in Wilton, which was so far away. And it was in such a location that it kind of doesn't make sense uh for that investment. Um, thus we were thinking.
She's asking about the Route seven, Richfield.
You're talking about the outdoor.
Yeah, the outdoor range.
Yeah, that's the, the outdoor range on Route seven that we already use.
Oh, yeah. Um, was your question about that?
I mean, if, I guess you kind of answered it, that, yeah, if another town is interested doing it on.
Yes, well, this, yes, well, well, but those are two separate issues, right? So going to a a town, another town building a new range, Wilton is thinking about it as well in their northeastern part of their town. Um, so they're thinking about it. Uh, but as far as the outdoor shooting range on Route seven, uh, they have made a decision recently to sort of cut back on police departments.
Yeah, so so that's, there's competition there of dozens of departments and it state-owned land managed by a private entity, and uh due to complaints about noise, one of the days is now no longer available. Um, so it's becoming very difficult to get time there. And of course, it's weather dependent. It's not that versatile. It's not indoors.
But that's where they currently uh get approved for rifles.
Yes.
Today.
That's right.
But now going forward, they're basically saying that police departments will be able to use this area less. And that has police departments very concerned about how they're going to uh deal with that.
Are you confined to Connecticut towns, or can you reach out to places in Westchester or Poundridge?
New York ordering towns that have the same deficiency. Um, somebody that's closer and and it's also something to be said for networking and and working together with departments that we may need in in a big crisis, or they meet us. So that's, that's a real valuable thing too.
Good, great.
Sure. Can you, can you, one more question on the built, back to the building. Can you put the slide up of the the old building in the back? I was gonna ask about what will neighbors and folks living in that area expect as far as when we're gonna, are we ripping the back of the building off to the point of we're going all the way up to the top of the building, or are we going sort of halfway up? Or what what exactly will the back of that thing look like, you think?
Brian, you wanna talk to that?
What's going to be demolished is a two-story addition. The former high school building will not be demolished. Uh, but the the two-story addition and what you're seeing in the slide is also a two-bay garage, which will also be demolished. So we're bringing the demolition back to the face of the former high school and then adding on to the back of the building there.
So basically, right.
It will be two stories.
Okay, so two stories, it basically would come up to the bottom of that first windows, the bottom of the first window there, I guess, right?
Bottom of the upper level windows.
Right, so, and then, so you're really not even getting into the envelope except to break through where you're gonna go into the the old building, I guess, right? There's probably.
That's correct. And and we're gonna be replacing the windows in the existing building, so architecturally, we'll be able to bring the existing building back into its architectural character.
And the idea, obviously, you don't have a design to show us yet, but the idea will be to try to make it match what is, what it looks like, kind of, and blend it together.
Correct, much better than what you have now.
Yeah, well, anything, anything might be better than that, you know, there, and that's.
A large percentage of the windows are rotten and failing, um, if for one reason or another. So essentially, all of the windows have to be replaced, and Brian was proposing that when we replace them, we actually replace them with um more architecturally relevant windows to when the building was first built.
Right, much like they did here in terms of the same ones in the front, you're right. Uh, Christina.
Would any, would any of the windows be, uh, would it, would they include a uh bulletproof glass?
I don't know. I I'm happy to address that.
No, I don't, I don't think.
Impact resistant, or they'd be impact resistant for hurricane uh resistance? That would be the requirement for the windows, but not ballistic rated.
Or just bacteria is post-acute rated, but not not the rest of the building.
Thank you.
Okay.
Police buildings um by state and federal regulations must be quote hardened to withstand all types of emergencies and hurricanes would be one of them, and flying debris, therefore you end up with a hardened glass, but it's not a bulletproof class.
Okay.
All right, I think uh we've exhausted it for tonight. And you're, the seventy-five thousand go into hop and engineering for remediation. You're gonna get a report back as far as what's going on there, right? I'm sure, I'm sure.
That was their estimate.
So that was their estimate for remediation.
Oh, total remediation?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Does Paul Foley know about this?
So what, what, it was a limited assessment in that it was uh from only what they could physically see. So when you um, when you pull the lockers away from a wall, they they didn't get in and look at the wall, though their their assessments seem to be um pretty darn thorough. Um.
Cause that's low based on our past experience.
No, you're right, you're absolutely right. It's people who have lived through the Saks Building Committee and Penny could uh can certainly talk to that as well. Uh, you, you know, never underestimate the uh ability of the state to tell you that there's lead paint under a boiler, and somehow that would greatly affect the health of the people in the building. So you never know, but uh.
That's a big scary one. We've seen it so many times.
You see, this, Bill, I don't think this quite is uh as grave as this because the building was first renovated in nineteen eighty and an additional renovation was done in two thousand and seven, eight. So uh, this has been looked at and poked and prodded and cleaned up twice previously. So I think that the the report is is not so far off.
Right, good.
Really quick.
That's good news, really good news.
Just really quick.
Nope, Rita.
Um, I think you mentioned this briefly, but I wasn't sure if I heard it heard it all. Um, you mentioned that the new building would be more energy efficient, and then you'll have new windows. I assume that there there's an upside there, which is the operations going forward, your energy, energy costs would be significantly improved going forward, which is an upside we need, we should think about. Is that, is that something?
That, that's actually true. And in addition, because as Stuart pointed out a minute ago, all the existing windows are gonna be replaced with current uh energy-efficient windows, but they'll mirror the design of the original of uh architecture, as you saw on one of the earlier slides. So we're gonna, we'll get energy improvement on the whole building.
All right, thank you, guys. I just want to remind the council that we have Mike Morrow uh on this committee, and he obviously will keep us informed every, every step of the way, and any questions, we certainly can get to Mike and and to the committee too, so.
Just so we're clear um with the town council that that our next step is to be uh writing, drafting up a proposal for one point two million to be added to the three hundred we have, which will then provide us the ability to go forward with detailed uh uh engineering drawings.
Yeah, we're doing that for the selectmen on Tuesday.
Yeah, and then, and then uh that would then go forward to the Board of Mayor and Town Council in the upcoming weeks.
Thank you. And support.
Figure, right?
Yeah.
Oh, of the option A versus option B, like renovate that or tear it down and then rebuild.
Yes, you have that slide, Stuart, can you put it back up? Just so, we'll we'll take a straw poll with that slide up. Now, while you're doing that, I just want to acknowledge, we've got a couple of, a couple of uh officers in the room too. Thank you, guys, for uh coming tonight. We really appreciate it. Always good to see you in the room. Really, really appreciate it. All right, here we go. So we need us, uh, we're gonna take a straw poll. Um, I mean, I think based on our joint meeting and based on what I would presume is the wish of the council, and I don't want to be too presumptive, but I'd rather just vote on what we would assume is the uh preferred option, and that would be the addition, um, unless there's other objections to it. Anybody, anybody wanna weigh in on countering that? Okay.
So that's what option B is.
Option B.
It'd be is the not, not additional, I'm sorry, not additional, I'm sorry.
I'm confused, so I should have asked my question back when the slide was up there. Find the term, build new.
Oh, yes, Brian? Build is new, replace is new?
Renovate is new, right?
Renovate is new, yeah.
It'll be a renovated as new project, but the build new is a build new addition in the rear.
Right, did, was your question about what defining renovate is new, or is?
No, 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 I both options. He clarified, that's the renovate, that's the the addition.
The addition is build new, it's build new, a complete, so the down of the back garage and building new.
So the the twenty-five-six includes that soft estimate for the, for the, uh, no, no, that's not training center that.
No, there is no training center in these numbers.
Okay, so option, I'm, okay, option A would be not to rebuild the addition from scratch. Okay, I'm, okay.
So option B is the preferred option.
Right, the building committee voted unanimous unanimously on option B.
Right. All right, so we just need a uh show of hands to support option B. Those in favor? That looks pretty good. Uh, Mike, are you out there still?
He's got both hands up.
Good call.
But also, I think it's important too, because we had our joint meeting, I'd like to take a straw poll and get the the council's um uh, support or or objection to sort of that two and a half million dollar placeholder for a range somewhere too. I mean, or is that too premature?
They, they need to come back.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
I agree.
All right, so you wanna see more on that? Okay.
Let me, let me, let me just make a quick point on the range. We really need this to go in two, on two tracks parallel. If you need more information, obviously, that needs to be, you know, secured, but I can't, I I don't, it shouldn't be off to the side like, all right, we'll get to it. There just has to be as much urgency to get that moved along as uh quickly as possible.
I think that was.
Yeah, I think we agree on that. Okay, good. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Mike, and we're gonna rely on you to uh get us all the information as we go along here, so.
Certainly.
Keep us in the loop. All right, thanks.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, it's always good seeing you back, back in the room.
Always great to be here.
Yep, thank you, and thank you, Stuart.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. All right. Item number eight, moving on to the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA appropriations. Uh, we will review and vote to approve Board of Selectmen and Recommendations for five hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred dollars of ARPA funds for local nonprofit organizations. And I'm hoping that Lauren Patterson has hung on here. Uh, if she's out there on the call, we'll call on her. Hey, Lauren, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Thank you so much for joining us.
Sure.
At nine twelve, you've been on, you've been watching us for two hours and twelve minutes?
I have.
All right, for you. For you. Well, thank you again for for joining us, and and thank you for obviously all the work that you and the community foundation have put into uh we gave you a big assignment here to uh go through and vet all of these different organizations. So maybe you could just spend a minute on the process, if you would, and just bring us up to speed.
Sure. So thank you for having me, and thank you for the town partnership thus far on these um, this ARPA process. So dating back to last summer of twenty twenty-one, um, we engaged in just initial conversations with the town when we knew that ARPA dollars were incoming and that uh some of our nonprofit partners might make great investments in our community. We partnered with uh TDAC and the Chamber of Commerce on a listening session series uh last July, and then heard from both small businesses and local nonprofits some priorities that they felt um should be expressed in the use of ARPA dollars and some great early ideas. Um, we followed up then uh last fall on those conversations and then worked with the town to host a, an online application process for our local nonprofits. And I, I, I think um most council members know the foundation well, but we've been around since nineteen seventy-seven. Um, we receive applications of upwards of one hundred different local nonprofits each year, so we have Um, we receive applications of upwards of one hundred different local nonprofits each year. So we have um, reach into nonprofits, both in New Canaan and and in Southwest Fairfield County and a a large volunteer corps that involved, that is engaged in our annual grant making process. So we um, hosted this online application um, did outreach to organizations so that they could apply and review the criteria. And then we formed a committee that reviewed the uh, thirty three grant applications that came in as a result. Um, what you see before you are recommendations to fund twenty two of those organizations. There were a few that we um, assessed would be better suited to for the town to negotiate and vet vet directly. So we pulled that out of our committee process. And then there were a few that we felt felt did not fit the criteria for ARPA funding and those we recommended to decline. So the twenty two before you uh, totaled that five hundred and eighty two thousand six hundred dollars. Um, and you'll see in the um, materials provided, those cover a wide variety of services. But I would say a couple of key things to note are investments in behavioral health, mental health support and other uh, community support services for our residents. Um, investments in arts and culture institutions that we really viewed as um, an opportunity both to bring the community back together. Um, but also as economic development and tourism opportunities. And then what we saw is some great opportunities to also invest in environmental resources that were well tapped uh, during the pandemic and could be in in future times, um, and some other great uh, town resources. Um, and I would say just in in closing that um, those topical areas that you see before you, we we did have several committee meetings as a full committee, but we also broke into smaller groups that went deeper on each of these topics and had follow up conversations with the organizations to vet further any questions.
Thank you, Lauren.
Sure.
Just understand the handout, the first page. Oh, she doesn't have, she doesn't have, yeah, she doesn't have that, I don't think. This is, this is the Tucker put this out for us. This is the total. First page summarizes everything to date, including Lawrence Lawrence's recommendations. The following three pages are components of Lawrence's package, which totals five eighty two. Well said, that's correct.
What what is the eight thirty two six pending mean?
The eight, the eight thirty two pending would just be the um, the the five eighty two that we haven't approved and the two fifty for the town players that that table.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
So once we approve, if or if we approve the five eighty two, then the um, the approval amount would just go up by that amount on the bottom. And then the incremental, the difference is what's left would change as well. And in any case, we'd have almost a million eight left to dis- disperse. That's correct. Um, we'd actually have, yeah, just about two million dollars. Uh, Maria.
Um, since I think I kind of got onto the committee a little bit into the process, was the New Canaan Community Foundation given a specific amount at the beginning that they would be in charge of? Was there ever an amount? Yeah.
No, I think I think there was a range placeholder, but there wasn't a specific amount.
Yeah, originally, we thought between five hundred and a million dollars is where we'd end up.
Yeah, it's a pretty big range. But it's hard to, when you have thirty asks and you don't know the range. They would know better. That's why we asked Lauren and Meg and everyone else to do it.
Lauren, what? The these final numbers that, at least final in the in terms of this report, uh, thinking of each individual organization. Uh, in how many cases is does this, is this the dollar number that they asked for versus it's less?
That's a good question. Um, I would say probably a half or so are the amount requested. Um, and it, you know, I can, I can certainly pull those exact numbers, but I'd say it's it's sort of split between those that were reduced and those were the full dollar amount requested. And I would say there was a large variety in the amount requested. So certainly the dollar, um, the grant recommendations that you see that are under, say, ten thousand or so, those were fully funded. Um, so when you see quite small grant amounts, that that was the request from the organization. We were really only um, pulling back on some that were significantly larger dollar requests.
Okay.
I have a question.
Any other questions, Kim?
Hi, Lauren, this is Kim Norton. I have a question about the, um, you said you got about thirty requests. I was curious about the eight, I think that were the seven or eight that were not granted funds. If you could talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So there were thirty three requests. Um, there were five that were recommended for the town to pursue directly. Um, for a variety of reasons. Um, some, in some instances, the town is pursuing, I think, um, other options um, or has a a different type of direct relationship with the organization. So that was the New Canaan Athletic Foundation, Town Players, the VFW, Wavine Life Care and the YMCA. And then there were several organizations that were not recommended to move forward for funding. Um, and this was primarily because they were not serving a significant number of New Canaan residents. Um, those were Laundry Love Liberation Programs, the Norwalk Community College Foundation, Planet New Canaan, Women's Mentoring Network and Silver Hill Hospital had a different funding request that came in, um, that is separate and and distinct from the urgent assessment program that was funded recently with ARPA dollars.
Thank you. Okay, was that, was that it?
Yeah, so I was just curious what the amounts were that were requested, um, like the New Canaan Athletic Foundation, Town Players, VFW, Wave Any Life Care and the YMCA.
Sure, let me just grab that.
Those are probably going to be larger amounts.
Yeah.
That's why we wanted the town to do.
We we pull out the larger ones, we felt wasn't appropriate to have the community foundation function on those. So for example, the you can't athletic foundation, we did alternative funding at three hundred thousand dollars a year through the budget. Um, they 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 really wanted, they asked for money they they didn't get on their fundraisers, but we really decided we'd rather just put it through the budget budget process. The YMCA, we're still working on, and I expect to bring that forward in a few weeks. What's the other one?
About the VFW.
Yeah, so that that's that's been like sort of the VFW has been the cause of some some confusion, I think. And we probably, we need to talk about that tonight because you know, there's, I've been getting a lot of calls about this. And obviously, you know, it it's a chance now Lauren actually um, put some information out about the the reasoning behind that. But Kevin, if you want to just take a minute and just talk about that for a second and uh,
Well, I should rather Lauren address VFW first and then I'll.
So so Lauren, can you address the VFW first and then then we'll um, we'll talk about it again.
Sure. So they had a, they had a fifteen thousand dollar request and this fell into the bucket of feeling that that the town would best. Um, that this for other funding opportunities, not necessarily ARPA dollars that would run through this particular committee process. Um, they had a fifteen thousand dollar operating request. And I think there was some can, some confusion potentially. Um, but the community foundation separate from this ARPA process does support the VFW. We've recently made a grant to them. Um, but this this particular request, we felt didn't necessarily align with ARPA resources. But the committee did say, you know, this would be great for the town to consider some mechanism to support on an annual basis.
And I would say we we haven't addressed that yet as far as the town, because uh, ordinarily, VFW is not considered a nonprofit in terms of the having a five oh one C three status.
I think it does have that status.
I don't think so. It's an association, but it's not a five oh one C three. Uh, but but you know, as Lauren said, not really being in the category of ARPA funds, we've looked at others where ARPA funds have certain criteria. And it was similar to the Athletic Foundation in terms of, you know, they weren't able to do fundraisers. But other, you know, for example, Get About, you didn't have fundraisers, but their expenses were way down so that, you know.
Yeah.
Um, so the a lot of criteria, you know, historically, we have not funded the VFW with tax dollars.
Right. But I think, you know, in this particular case, because it's a one off and because it's not a big number and because there's twelve of us up here that, you know, and and I know you and and listen, every time we walk into this building, we walk past those plaques and I think about that every single time I walk into this building. So for the little amount of money we're talking about, it's just not. And I and I get it that we don't want to get into continually funding this. This is a one time, it's a one time.
You have an agenda before you what the community foundation's recommendation. That doesn't mean we we we.
We can add and we can add to it. I get that. That's great.
We 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 got more process to go through.
Correct.
Yeah, still.
Yeah. So so then we'll probably want to have a separate conversation and um, after this about this and see how we can put it, put it back on the put it back on the docket again. But go ahead, Christina.
I would move that we postpone the vote and have the community foundation look at it again for the VFW. And then we can vote out at the next meeting.
Well, I think we want to, Christine, I think we want to move some of this stuff through because I think some of these folks are waiting, you know, they'd have to wait another whole month. So I think we need to move this through, but.
Sorry, I'd like to back that only because I've received a lot of outreach from people who really love the Memorial Day Parade and volunteer at the cemetery. And um, I've also talked to people who have talked about who have let me know how the VFW has been affected during COVID. They weren't able to do their poppy pledge. A lot of the members are in their mid seventies and could not, did not uh, fundraise because of COVID and wasn't, weren't able to do that. So I totally respect the process that you've gone through and 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 understand that it took a lot of work. But I do think I agree with Steve that this is a fifteen thousand dollar request, which I think is a lot less than these other um, organizations. And there's been an outpouring of um, comments um, in in the so- social media as well as to me personally that we have to respect our veterans. I mean, my brothers are lieutenant colonel who served in Desert Storm. And if it wasn't for our veterans, um, this this town would not exist. So I I think it's a paramount importance that we take this very seriously. And all these people are volunteers. They've volunteered their service to our country and then they volunteered their service in the parade. And, you know, taking care of the cemetery and mapping the graves of the veterans in the cemetery. And I I think that we can't turn our back on them.
Well, and and Kim, to be clear, though, you know, I I as I said earlier, there's twelve of us that, I mean, all of us unanimously agree that that is the case. I mean, there's nobody up here saying anything different than what you're saying. And I don't think Kevin's saying that at war, Lauren, we just got to figure out the mechanism that we're going to get.
Yeah, but I don't think they should have to wait. I I don't think they should have to wait. So I'm going to second Christina's motion to delay the vote.
So the the hold on, before we do that, the good news is that the fifteen thousand for the VFW, based on what we know, it goes toward buying wreaths buying flags and all that. You know, I don't think that they are going to need to do that until the following year. So they're not as much in a rush as some of these other folks are to get funded. So um, I would rather not postpone this whole vote based on fifteen thousand dollars if we can help it. That's my.
Problem, Steve, and I hear what you're saying. The problem I have is that, I mean, just listening to what Kevin was saying is like, well, it doesn't meet ARPA criteria. And also, by the way, this isn't really anything the fund would normally fund on a recurring basis because it's not really a five oh one C three. So that sounds like something just fell right into a crack. And I don't know what what discussion on a mechanism could be had uh, that's going to resolve that. You know, that sounds like it's a much longer discussion. So I mean, that's why I'd really like to understand what what basis the ARPA funding criteria do not apply to this fifteen thousand dollar request. Uh, and I don't want to hold up, you know, the other money, but I mean, I'm happy to have come back next week uh, for a special session just on that alone. But I just think this is so important and sends us a really just not a good message right now. But I I I really just don't see uh, me personally moving forward with this entire allotment if a fifteen thousand dollar request is getting denied right now. And I'm just being told, well, it's not really the the applicable criteria aren't applicable.
We've opened the ARPA funds to community, to foundations outside of New Canaan. And we should be looking to New Canaan organizations first. And I don't know anyone that defines more New Canaan than the veterans.
Well, then we have a decision to make. We can either.
Make, okay, we cannot, we cannot include it in this book because.
Now, you have to, you have to send it all, you have to send it all back. You can't increase it.
No, wait, that's not, send it all back. That's why veterans come to us.
Yeah, it seems like we we don't have the option of dealing with the veterans issue tonight. We don't have a proposal in front of us. So.
And the town, the town bodies do not function on it, you know, if the, and you can't send it back to the community foundations, say, you have to approve this. That's just not a process.
No, we want them to take another look at it. So Christina made a motion to delay the vote and I've seconded it. So I think we have the Robert's Rule says that we vote on that motion to delay it.
But the reality is that the Board of Finances has not voted on it.
Nor has the Board of Selectmen.
And the and the monies were arranged between five hundred and a million. So it's not like we're you know, it's a fixed number as when it comes from the Board of Finances to us. It really was a range. I don't see a reason why we can't add it to that budget.
Right, but they're mutually exclusive. This number doesn't include that money. So we're approving this. We can take up. We can approve fifteen thousand dollars.
You can't, you can't approve it if the board is selecting the board of finance.
I'm saying you guys could approve it and bring it through the process. But we can't, you can't, we can't add it to this number by tabling it. We're we we're not. All we're doing is we have to send it back to the starting line again, is basically. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't go back to the the community foundation. No, 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 they've already done their work. They've already done. Lauren, you're off the hook on this one.
Can I say one thing quickly? I mean, I'm a I'm a granddaughter of a World War Two veteran and the daughter of a Vietnam veteran. And my cousin was in, I mean, I'm just all over the place with military. So I totally support the VFW. I also completely support these nonprofits and I don't see the logic in punishing them for not funding the VFW. That to me seems like robbing Peter to pay to, I mean, we're just delaying everything, which I don't. Nobody's going to forget about our veterans and I don't see why we would. It really would, you guys, it really would punish these these charities and these organizations that have really been hurt by COVID that this money is intended to. And I've been beating the drum about behavioral health, mental health stuff. There's more money in here for for those types of organizations. I would be, I think it would be irresponsible for us to table this for one request that we want made. And I think that we should go through and approve or not, you know, if we want to do it line by line, however we want to do it. I think we should deal with this request that we have tonight. We will not forget about these veterans. We will make a commitment tonight to that. But I really, I don't see the logic in punishing all of these other other charities for that. I I I don't, that's how I feel.
We could always have a sense of the council motion that we're in support of the VFW allocation, however it gets done. And then go ahead and approve what what's in front of us as well.
Well, and I would add, there are probably a couple of other things that may be on the list that we also think should have been, maybe not from the, you know, the community foundation. But maybe there are a few other things that we're lost in the shuffle that we should address. I don't want to bring it up now, but I I think that's a whole, I could, that could be a separate thing that we add or that um, the Board of Selectmen could consider.
Yeah, nothing is lost in the shuffle. You know, we just have a process, we have a
I'm, well, I'm.
Yeah, we knew this was going to continue on for
Yeah.
for the rest of the year.
There's other opportunities.
The whole year.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else online that wants to speak?
Luke, Luke is online, I believe.
Yes, Mike, just Mike.
No, Luke is there nine oh eight?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I I'm online. This is Luke.
Hey, Luke.
Hi, Luke.
What's going on? Apologies, Jackie had a baseball game tonight. Um, New Canaan nine, you lost. But um, in my opinion, uh, yeah, I I if if it's only a week, is it really punishing everyone else? And I I see both sides of the comments and, you know, there, depending on who you talk to, people are really upset about this. The sentiment is like in the outreach of how could, how could we not do this? And the response of, hey, it fell through the cracks or it's assigned here, but we're going to make it up there. Uh, you know, I I I would support postponing if it was only a very short period of time.
It it, Luke, it's going to be, it's going to be more than a month because we don't have a meeting in August. The Board of, it would have to be a special. Well, it has a, so it has to go through the Board of Selectmen, then through the Board of Finance. And then Board of Finance is meeting in August. They're going to do a a Zoom meeting. So it would have to be, we would have to probably have an another meeting in August to get it done, which is possible. If the Board of Selectmen can move it to the Board of Finance and then they can move it to us, we can get it done. Is this what the Viet VFW would want for us to hold all these other charities hostage?
No.
No.
No. Is that what they would want us to do? No.
I think if we could commit, so.
We have a motion. This is part of the discussion. So if this guy, we have to call the, call the motion if the discussion is over. We'll restate the motion. We restate the motion, we need a vote, so.
To table the funding.
What is, can you say the motion again?
Um, I propose that we table the vote on the ARPA funds um, and have a special meeting as soon as possible. And for the VFW appropriation to be reconsidered.
I made a second one, Ken.
I'll second it.
And question discussed.
Sure.
If we did that, what is the soonest that it could come before?
Yeah, that's good.
And the 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 Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen have recommended the slate of what's been approved by the uh, community foundation. You can't amend that without going back to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. So.
And so what would be the soonest that? Back to us. It would have to be.
July 12th, I mean, August 12th is the, uh, next meeting, August 9th, Board of Finance.
That's your.
It's not really holding hostage. I thought it seems a little.
We don't need the money right now.
Well, I, that's what I'm saying. Neither of these organizations, like these are things that are down the road. So, so I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah, I agree, Maria. I don't think we're punishing or trying to hold hostage. We're just trying to make sure that there's, you know, no discrimination against the VFW.
Can we do both? Can we say, I guess, I guess I'm thinking, I, I agree. I mean, I wholeheartedly agree that VFW deserves our attention. I guess, I, I, can we agree that we'll approve this and then add later? I don't, I don't, I guess that would be, is there a motion that we can do?
Well, that's sure. That, so if this motion doesn't carry, then the next motion could be that we vote on this tonight and that we move to recommend to the Board of Selectmen a $15,000.
That's, yes.
Allocation that we want to come back through and we want to have it back by our August meeting.
So that is another possibility. Okay.
July of August. Well, last, no, we'll have a special meeting for that.
Yeah.
A Zoom meeting, like Board of Finance is doing a Zoom.
Yeah, but it's got to go to Board of Selectmen and then to the Board of Finance.
Aren't we going to need a special meeting anyway in August because the police department, they're going through Board of Selectmen next week and then Board of Finance, what they want to vote?
No, we're going to proceed based upon the 400, $350,000 we have left in the, uh.
Okay.
I can't go without seeing you guys for a whole month. Come on.
Want to go to the beach?
Oh, no, it'll be, it would be a Zoom meeting. So we can zoom in. It would be literally, I need you for 15 minutes. I mean, I need you for 15 minutes.
I know. I've been in Norway. I've been in Jordan. I mean, I.
All right, that, that seems like the best solution, but let's, let's vote on this, um, let's vote on this, um, unless you want to withdraw your motion.
No, I don't.
Okay. And you know.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to table. Vote on the, uh, the funds on a special meeting, which the VFW will be reconsidered.
Everybody understand what we're doing there on that motion?
No, say that again.
So the mo, the motion on the floor is to.
Reconsider. Okay, yep.
And I, I'm, I missed what everyone said, that the phone just might, the, the line just cut out for some reason.
The motion on the floor right now is to table the vote tonight for, uh, the, um, Community Foundation recommendations. And to come back at, at a special meeting.
And that's the first motion, Luke. We're going to have a second motion. If that doesn't carry, the second motion would be to pass this tonight and to move the 15,000 to the Board of Selectmen for approval and then have a special meeting. Board of Finance would approve it and then the council would approve it.
So can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
If we table this, there's no guarantee that the Board of.
No, no, and there's no guarantee. There's no, there's no guarantee either way either. I mean, we.
Good, no guarantee either way.
Yeah, okay. There's no guarantee either way.
Couldn't we make two motions, table and have them reconsider? I mean, you know, like first we.
Force them to do it.
We can't, we can't force them to do it. We're, we're, we are, we are, 12 of us are strongly suggesting that this happened, strong. So, and I, you know, hopefully there's support.
Current motion is just to table it, nothing else.
Current motion is, yes.
I just wanted to be clear that.
No, and to have a special meeting, at which time the VFW will be reconsidered.
Well, point of order though, you, you can't predict the future. You don't know that it's going to come back to us from the other bodies. So you can't, you can't.
No, but this will come back to us. That's what we're saying.
No, but, but Penny said is the second part of the motion.
Second part of the motion doesn't, is a, is speculative. Very speculative. So I don't know what I'm voting on.
You can't vote as a second step in this motion to adopt a VFW approval.
That hasn't happened yet.
Because we keep, we were not able to, to adopt a VFW approval until it comes from the other body.
I think they said reconsider the VFW request, not adopt it. So it's basically asking someone to look at it again.
But it has to come to us from the other two bodies in order to reconsider it.
Agreed.
Okay, so it's up to them. The ball's in their court.
Yeah.
Who's court? The VFW, Kevin and everyone else. No, it's, it's up to other bodies to bring it back to us.
Just to be clear, let's, just to be, just to be clear about the differences of those two motions. One would be at your current motion to send the whole package back. The second motion would be to send our request back. That's really the only difference in simple terms. Those, that's the, uh, so if you want to send the whole package back and delay the rest of the, of these organizations from getting their money immediately. That's, that's, you, you would vote. You know?
Yes. You would vote, yes.
Yes, you would vote, yes. All right, is that clear? Everybody clear? Okay.
Okay.
Bush on the floor. So, uh, you want to do show hands or?
Yeah, I think we.
I, I don't think I'm clear on what we're talking on.
We are voting on approving the vote tonight.
Yes. Okay. Okay.
And then having a special meeting at which the VFW will be reconsidered.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously with the assumption that it's going to go through the process.
Okay, thank you, Penny.
Okay, motion to approve the, the motion on the floor.
All at the table. Okay, no, I, I think I've got to, when we're having a vote, if it's not going to be unanimous, I have to.
All right, go ahead.
Go ahead, Penny.
The secretary, do your thing.
I am about to do my stick. Bates Mason.
No.
Tino.
No.
Butterworth.
No.
Uh, Jimski.
No.
Carl.
No.
Kaufman. Luke.
Unmute.
You're on mute.
Hand signals.
Luke.
He's on mute.
Mike Morrow.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Ormon.
Now.
Ross.
Yes.
Young, no.
This is, this, this is Luke. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I apologize. Uh, votes, yes.
Thank you, Luke.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, no's. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so.
Did you vote, Penny?
Seven, five, seven, five, motions, motion dies.
Guys, we will now vote.
Oh, we had, now we need to enter.
Make a motion.
Another, yeah, um, so Mark.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the Board of Selectmen recommendation of $582,600 of ARPA funds for local nonprofit organizations.
Can't we make a motion to deal with the VFW first?
No.
There's nothing to do it.
Prove the things.
We know it's, we don't, the only thing about that, and it's a good question, Kim, because everybody needs to understand that we, we can't really make a motion. Uh, we can't make a motion on that. We have to just, it has to be all 12 of us at once saying, we need to make this happen. For a number of reasons, but we can't, you know, we can't have a formal vote because there's nothing to.
There's nothing hard.
I got it.
But I think everybody's on the same page on this one. So.
We want to make it happen, Kim.
I was going to, you have a second?
Second, Tom. All in favor? Oh.
Uh, if we think it's going to be unanimous, then prove it.
All right, yeah, everybody, okay.
We're approving that.
Discussion too, right?
You want discussion too?
Yes, so if we vote. I guess this is leverage. If this doesn't go forward, um, if it's not approved, that is the leverage to really.
No, remember, no guarantee either way, no guarantee either way. And I would be really, really surprised if you had three Board of Selectmen that said they're not going to put $15,000 of, of, of ARPA money on the table for the VFW. But I'm not going to speak for them, but I'd be surprised.
You're putting them on the spot. Can, can we ask Kevin now?
No.
Can we take a straw poll?
Can we take a straw poll of one?
Yeah, someone's got to go and present it.
Okay, yes, that's.
Just asking.
Okay, so this motion is to approve 580 through to 600,000.
Yes, so there's a motion. Mark made a motion to approve as, as.
As proposed.
Proposed. Tom was our second. And now, if we think we're unanimous. Apparently we're not unanimous.
Yay.
All right, so I'm going to take a vote. All, 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 all in favor, raise your hand.
My hand is raised.
Okay, Luke, you're up. Mike, you're up. Opposed.
Okay.
Kim's opposed, so it's 11, one. Thank you.
Uh, Christina didn't vote.
Thanks, Christina.
No staring.
No staring.
You've got 16 minutes until 10 o'clock. Take your time.
Okay, all right. So what are we, what, what is the final vote on this? 11?
11, one. Level one.
Guys, I have to sign off. I have trial first thing. So thank you and, uh, I'll see you, uh, another time. Enjoy yourself.
Thank you very much.
It's actually 10.
So Steve, do you?
Are you saying you're not open to us just doing a informal straw poll on the VFW? I mean, we did, we do it, we did it on other.
Do a straw poll.
Let's do a straw poll.
To give an indication of what we think.
That's fine. Uh, so. Go ahead, Tom, you want to make a motion? Oh, actually, there's no motion because it's a straw poll. But you can, yeah, go ahead, put in words.
Fine, I'm just saying we.
Put in words.
Let's, let's have everybody raise their hand if they think that we're in strong support of a $15,000 allocation. However, it gets done from whatever pot of money it comes from. We need to deliver this result and we're all in agreement on that.
Here, here.
Are all in favor? That is unanimous.
In favor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Kevin, Kevin's sitting here and he's got the message. So we appreciate, we appreciate. I will put that in writing to the Board of Selectmen and I may even go to the meeting.
Steve, Steve, so that we can have it included in the minutes, why don't you just formally ask? What? What?
It was part of the motion. Yeah, I mean, that was, it's, it's part of the record. We're good. We'll follow up on it. All right. Uh, committee reports. We'll make them quick. Uh, anybody have anything they want to report on, um, bylaws and ordinances? Any updates?
Well, we, I could say quickly that we, we had a meeting in mid-June and, um, we, uh, moved along three. Issues that were pending. One is, has to do with, um, some ordinances that may be out of date in terms of case law in the area of the First Amendment. And, um, I think the committee authorized me to just get together with Stephen, write a letter, um, requesting our, our legal counsel to identify, um, from a list of ordinances, which of them might need to be updated so they're facially consistent with the First Amendment. Uh, then the other one was, um, we had an individual citizen, uh, who in, in the course of renovating a building, put an apartment in on the second floor, but then realized that she wasn't able to, to give, uh, 24-hour parking rights to her tenant. And so the, you know, the question was, should we rethink our current policy of, of prohibiting overnight parking in, in town lots in, in order to accommodate this request? And I think that people were very sympathetic to it, but we felt that this is, this is a very broad question with, with serious implications on our parking capacity in town. And we weren't ready to do that for, to solve one complaint. So I let that woman know today that, uh, the committee was not going to report that to the town, full town council. Great, thank you.
There was a third, just quickly, um, about gas-powered leaf blowers.
Thank you.
Yes.
That big one.
Um, and I'm just reading my notes, which are very sloppy. Um, and we, uh, we've realized that the issue is very complex. That we are going to continue working on it. Uh, Chris Shipper was on from the Conservation Committee. Uh, we talked about the Quiet Yards Greenwich Survey. Um, hard to know how neutral it was. And so we're going to continue digging into that. Uh, we proposed, you know, Kim made some great points about not recreating the wheel, using the information that we could find there. Um, talked about noise levels, whether we would, you know, alter the ordinance to, um, to directly affect that. Um, and we're going to do some more follow-up, like asking, um, there's a lot of questions about, do, would we want to say like a certain number of leaf blowers on this size acreage or not? And I, I thought, we thought as a group that part of that is figuring out really where, uh, how many, how many houses, how many, where the acreage lies, like how many four-acre plots do we have versus one acre versus, you know, how that problem actually shakes out? So we're going to look at two issues, the noise issue and the health issue regarding the gas-powered leaf blowers. And we're going to workshop with the Conservation Commission on Quiet Yards, New Canaan, so to speak.
Great.
So that's where we go. And Tom, I'll get the minutes done.
You're still offering?
Yes, of course.
I thought I was going to, oh.
They're in pencil though, so I can erase them if you want.
Good. All right, education, education, we're off. That's good. Finance and government?
You.
Gover, you've heard from us. Okay, Health and Human Services, I think.
Uh, I think most of the, uh, report came from, um, Kevin with, um.
With COVID.
Then moving, moving into Irwin for a while.
Okay.
And, um, she did mention, um, um, receiving some questions about, um, monkeypox. And, uh, state of Connecticut does not have any vaccine. Um, but they are, uh, working with, um, connections outside of the state, uh, when there are people who, you know, need the vaccine. And I think. I think that was about it. Uh, no, there, there was another, uh, question, uh, raised as to whether or not the town has a, an official grant writer. That, uh, comment has been passed on to the Board of Selectmen, uh, and also the Health and, uh, the Human Resources Department that has over the past been considered, um, and it'll be considered further again.
All right, thank you. Uh, infrastructure and utilities. Yeah. No.
We're holding a meeting in September with the, uh, Department of Public Works. So.
Good.
Stay tuned.
Good, good. All right, uh, land use and rec. Hey, Rob.
I'm going to try to go quickly. Um, at the Parks and Rec meeting, uh, their problem at Meat Park was brought up again. Um, Parks, Rec, uh, they're looking to a possible pilot program is how to handle the litter. But that program is to be determined. Um, a rep from Jehovah Witnesses and a congregation from South Salem, uh, came up with the wants to have a witness, uh, witnessing table in the park. I guess it's actually a cart. Uh, Commission Chair George Pennington said the town would need to seek legal counsel on the matter as it may be a free speech issue. So that's going to be brought up again at the meeting. Uh, Chris Shipper presented to the Parks and Rec regarding the trail leading to, into Bristow Sanctuary for Meat Park. It's a pebble pathway that used to be an access road. Um, so that's going to be on their September agenda about improving that. And then Conservation Commission, they have a new native tree planting program with the LDS Church. I think they're planning on sacks. Question was asked if people could plant trees in the right of way in front of their own houses. Tiger said yes, but the homeowner would need to contact him to discuss it. Um, it was done on Field Crest. Uh, if anyone's wondering about the state of trees and new plantings, they are watering right now. Uh, food scrap update, 62,000 pounds have been composted so far. Uh, solar 10 systems are up now running, uh, which is equivalent about 265 homes being taken off the grid. Uh, to, 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 uh, uh, the swap shop looks like it's going to open September, October and that's it.
It's a lot of stuff. Exciting. All right, public safety. We talked about the police station and I don't know if there's anything else. Rita, anything?
I don't know if Mike has anything. I do not.
Okay, yeah, Mike. And then on the library, Mark and I have been tuning into weekly meetings. Uh, roof is, roof is basically on, the windows are going in. They're starting to sheet rock inside. They're really moving along in the project. Uh, they're, they actually are working with the town to get, uh, some security cameras up, uh, on the corners of the building to monitor the intersections in town. Um, so a lot going on over there. You'll start seeing the stone going on too during the summer. And that's about it. They're on time, on budget. Excuse me. Mark, anything else to add?
No.
It looks great.
Decision with the, is, with the 1913 building, is that still, like I, I don't know the.
They're working, they're working on the plans and they're, you know, uh, they're actually wolf movers is coming in the summer to try to take a look at uh, what it's going to take to move it. So it's coming along. Losing my voice at the end of the night, sorry. But I, I, I do, if, if, if you'll undudge me for one minute, I, I just have a quick. We lost somebody in town. I just want to do a quick, uh, two minutes on. Um, it's a brief moment to remember a quiet but extremely impactful resident who passed away this week. Her name is Gloria Franco. She's lived in New Canaan since 1949. Uh, the Franco compound at 11 Tommy's Lane was always a place of high energy and high activity. And Gloria made it feel like she were loved and honored. And every time you, we visited, uh, it's amazing. And Gloria made it feel like she were loved and honored, and every time you, we visited, uh, it's amazing. But Gloria made countless contributions to our community over the years, including, she served on Parks and Rec, she served on the Canaan Women's Club and the Democratic Town Committee. She's also an active member of her church and served San Luis, this community in numerous different capacities, uh, including teaching the CCD, et cetera. But her biggest contribution that really isn't talked about is her legacy, and it was her family. Um, it doesn't, it wasn't volunteering or, or doing commission work. It was her family that really defined who she was. She has, she had eleven children.
Amazing.
And that's eleven kids and the grandchildren, and they all shared the same love and devotion of, of our community. But they've, a lot of them have remained in New Canaan. The Franco, the Franco family, seven out of eleven of them are actually still in town. Um, Rick, this, this is an amazing legacy, so just, um, just think about this as one nuclear family. Rick served four decades on the Parking Commission. Downton Study Committee and the DTC. He's had the year of every first selectman dating back to Charlie Morton, um, and has helped improve the Canaan's downtown. Immensely. Um, he's always been part of the business community. Tom, Tom Franco is eyes on, eyes on New Canaan constantly. He's downtown and made in Elm constantly. He's, he's, it's, uh, he's looking after the Franco's real estate holdings. But he quietly makes sure town is moving and trucks are not blocking things. Sidewalks are clear, pedestrians are safe. He's literally a hands-on guy. Who is a town, almost like a town employee for free. He constantly has Tiger on speed dial. It's amazing. Mike's a local attorney, so he served on the Charter Revision Commission and offered consultation in numerous properties and other transactions the town in New Canaan has gone through. He and Rick are the sole reason we have the New Canaan Playhouse to discuss today. They were the ones that put the deal together, that saved the playhouse. That gave it back to New Canaan, and that's something we should always remember. Uh, Carl, the local store owner, he's a driving force behind Franco's wine merchants. He served the Chamber of Commerce. And, and other positions in town. He spent most of his adult life on Elm Street. He's usually one of the first to arrive on the street and last to leave at night, and his early morning photographs of New Canaan are legendary. Carl's twin brother Claude just moved into town, adding another Franco to the New Canaan landscape. Katie, following in her mother's footsteps, is extremely active at St. Louis Parish, a number of roles, including working for our local Board of Education. Where she's, uh, been for years. She's also active in, in other organizations in town and has raised an impressive family of her own. And finally, Kelly, she's volunteered her services in our community, and she's recently spoken at the New Canaan Historical Society on the topic of baseball, one of her family's passions. Her husband operates a small furniture business in town as well. And if you notice, the theme of the Franco family is civic. It's civic-minded, civic-oriented. They constantly give back to this community. They're an amazing family, and from the bottom of our hearts, um, it's the reason, Gloria is the reason why this family has done so much for the community. So I just want to, on behalf of the town of New Canaan, I want to express our condolences to the entire Franco family. And wish them the best in this time, and, uh, remember Gloria, who gave us all the Francos in New Canaan. So, thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, it's ten fifty, nine fifty seven. We got out of here before ten. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Oh, the iPads, yes. I'm sorry, give iPads go to the back of the.